Littleton City Council to order it's on December 3rd, 2024. Uh, city clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Schlatter.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tembar.
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Peters.
Here.
Councilmember Reichart.
Here.
Councilmember Ryden.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Council's had a chance to review said agenda. Any changes? Seeing no changes, it's approved without objection. Uh, item four, proclamations. We have no proclamations tonight. Um, item five is public comment. A public comment period is a time for community members to come speak uh to council, uh expressing opinions regarding issues that are not part of public hearings on tonight's agenda. There will be a separate uh opportunity provided for uh comment on any public hearing. We do have several public hearings tonight, so if you're here for um ordinance 28, which is the uh streets and sidewalks, or ordinance 29, which is the uh postage meter and related services, or resolution 115, which is approving amendment to the future land use map. We will have a separate uh public hearing portion of the meeting later. Uh, let's see, each speaker is limited to three minutes. When you hit your three minutes, I will let you know. Uh, we expect comments to be civil, disrespectful, or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. Council is not authorized under open meeting laws to take action at this meeting on any issue raised by a public comment that's not part of tonight's agenda. Uh, I may refer matters to the city manager attorney to respond during their uh their comment period, or staff to get more information. We have several people signed up for uh general public comment. Uh, first up, we have Lynn Christensen.
Good evening, council. I'm Lynn Christensen from District Three. I'd like to begin tonight with the perspective from living in Littleton Village. Eight and a half years ago, we bought our home, which faces the northern retention channel, so I've had the opportunity to watch its use. Unfortunately, the grates in the outtakes are usually clogged with garbage and landscape material because the metro district hasn't stayed on top of maintaining them. Last year at two different times, the water overflowed the top to the secondary gates because of heavy rainfall and clogged primary grates. The retention channel is also a favorite dog run for residents who neglect to pick up their dog waste that pollutes the stormwater. The retention pond in the southwest corner of the property has been a favorite palette for graffiti artists and home for the unhoused. Additionally, I have several friends who live in the newly built Littleton Village Amly and Parkside Apartments, who have had issues with water leaks, other maintenance issues, and are told to run water in their faucets during cold spells, so the pipes don't burst. Which makes me wonder about the quality of construction materials being used and their lifespans. I wonder how long it will be until the thousands of apartments slated to be built in Littleton are allowed to fall into neglect and disrepair, or if construction materials are indeed inadequate. I wonder if then Littleton will finally attain its dream of affordable housing, or will it be more, more like a nightmare? The second topic that I'd like to address is the procedure for the Nov- November 11th Planning Commission meeting. I question why there was a vote for the approval of the Master Development Plan of 16 West Dry Creek Circle before city council members had a chance to vote on the land use designation change today. Why couldn't the vote of the MDP wait until city council voted on the land use designation change and then come back to Planning Commission to discuss the MDP separately? I'd like to ask staff to please address um why this sequence was done, because to me, this seemed to circumvent the full discussion and debate of the MDP, which was rushed and received very little time. Also at that meeting, there were two public comment agenda items, one for the recommendation for approval of the land use designation change, and the other for the conditional approval of the MDP. Each of the two agenda items had different decision criteria, and yet public, public commentators were only given three minutes total to speak to both items, rather than three minutes on each public comment agenda item. Again, I'd like to ask staff if they would please address the reason why. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Lynn. Uh, next up is Christopher James Taylor.
Hello, how are you, sir? Uh, yes, um, I'm here today um to uh, you know, growing up, I, I, I have a 12-year-old daughter and, and I grew up with a-
Just state your name and uh address, just for the record.
Uh, Christopher James Taylor. I live in Littleton, Colorado. And uh, I, I, so basically, this is uh my second time here. I, I, I came here the first time just to view. And, and so there was also, there's, I used, I used to live in Douglas County, and there was always a, a dare officer, you know, and, and it's just like there's step, there's stepping stones for, for, for students and our youth and our children to, to, to be able to like, you know, if they, if there was a dare officer and a dare group in uh, in, in Littleton, Colorado, or Jefferson County, or Arapahoe County, which, you know, um, it's like, you know, what would a mascot be like to, to children if they can look at the shield differently, or, or um, you know, like, would, would that like make extra, extracurricular activities, or, or you know, and it's, it's not very expensive, like a, a peace of mind is, is a, for, for elementary students, it's a dollar sixty-five. For middle school students, it's a dollar fifty-five. For high school students, it's a dollar thirty-five. You know, what would, I remember my dare officer in Castle Rock. You know, he, you know, he had this red hair and he drove, he drove a Camaro, and it's like, I, I, I remember, I remember just things before I would like go out for the night, or things when I would, when I would, just, I, I still live by today, you know, and, and it's a, I think it's really beneficial for knowing that there is not a dare international um, um, group uh for, you know, that the police officers go there um in, in Arapahoe County or Jefferson County, and I think it'd be really, really, really amazing to actually have that happen, you know, have, have like our youth, our future, you know, kind of like looking at the shield differently and/or being, being more like a, like, being, being able to like remember, you know, remember the knowledge, and, because I still remember from high school, from middle school, you know? And it was just, it was very, it would be very, very influential to, to our youth's like mindset. They're absorbing all this information and they're, you know? And it's a, it's, it's very, it's very intriguing, you know, and, and I thought that, that we did have one, and, and, and I was like, oh my gosh, like, that's, that's something I'm gonna bring up, just, it would be really fascinating for our youth, our children, our future to, to, you know, to, to maybe take in, and um, uh, let's see here, uh, let's see. And having that extra voice, you know, that, 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 that walks, that comes to your schools and, and, and uh provides the information of like, hey, we're not, we're not just here to say, hey, this is bad, like, you're, like, you know, or like, it's like, it's, it's like footsteps in life to, to, to enhance and enhance their lives, enhance, you know, and like, and become the people that, you know, the future to future, which they're gonna be, they're the future now, they're gonna be the future when, uh, you know?
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Christopher. I'll just say, we do have stu-, uh, school resource officers in all the middle school and high schools in Littleton here.
Not part of the dare program, but there are Littleton police officers in our schools. That's, that's great. That's, I, I've talked to a few of them, and that sounds great.
Thanks. Next up is uh Paul Marshall.
Hi, good evening, mayor. Good evening, city council. Really appreciate the opportunity. Um, so I'm here to talk about a um, an issue that divides two prime assets that Littleton has, and South Littleton especially. Jackass Hill Park and the Highline Canal Trail. Those two assets are now disconnected. So what do I mean by that? On Saturday, November 23rd, uh, a, a short trail that's been open for at least forty-plus years uh was closed by the private landowner. So, as a result, hundreds of taxpayers cannot access the Highline Canal Trail directly like they used to. Uh, I just finished serving on the board of the Palisade HOA, uh, serving a term there. Well, all 58 homeowners can't easily access it. Now they have to go all the way to down Jackass Hill, take the Mineral Connector, all the way around to the light uh across from Ryder's Vista in order to access Highline Canal. Whereas, uh, in, up till now, we simply went to the top of Prince and cut over and uh enjoyed the Highline. Um, so it's not just recreation use. A lot of kids go to Heritage High School. In fact, signage is posted very conveniently to explain how far a walk is, or how far a bike ride it is to Heritage High. So that route's now cut off. So I know a lot of the city uh folks are aware of this. Uh, thank you to Andrew Peters, uh, my council member in District Four, uh, for helping to raise voice to this. Um, I'm also aware that Jim Becklinburg is working on it, but I would ask for expedited work on this. Uh, this is the holiday time. A lot of folks have folks coming in from out of town, would love to take them on the Highline. You know, not an option except to go literally about a mile and a half in each direction. It's also kind of some unpleasant um publicity for Littleton. It's on Nine News, it's on Denver Post, uh, this closure. Uh, so would love to kind of, you know, rectify that, get it under control, and kind of have it uh resume usage for residents. It's been there for forty years. Um, love to have all legal options explored, uh, whether it's a statutory easement. Uh, love to get legal to weigh in on that. Uh, so any and all options, including uh your purchasing of that easement, that right-of-way. It's reserved for utilities, uh, for um Excel, uh, to be able to access power lines along that, but uh, uh, you know, obviously it, the property owner is not required to open it except for Excel. So, would love to, to get some action on it, um, and uh, an urgency on it. So appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Paul, and I am sure city manager will mention that in his comments. Uh, next up is Greg Sullivan.
Good evening, council. Mayor, thank you very much for letting me uh speak to you. Uh, I want to follow up to the last time I met with you about um, about the issues about preserving the swale and the green space at the mineral site. And I want to start off again by reading the House Bill 211266. All people have the right to participate freely in decisions that affect their environments, live free of dangerous levels of toxic pollution, and share the benefits of a prosperous and vibrant pollution-free economy. House Bill 211266. Also want to mention to you about climate justice. Our youth and our future generations are gonna experience profound impacts of climate change in the years to come. And the mineral place is gonna be a contributor. Unfortunately, it is, and um, it's unfortunate. Climate change, I got, just a good indication of climate change is the bird losses in North America have declined from ten billion birds in 1970 to seven, seven billion in 2019. A thirty percent decline. Why is that? Because of climate change. Why is that? Because we people have caused the landscape to go bad and the environment to poor, and the birds have declined. I like birds. I like to see geese on the swale at 700 Mineral. So I'm saying that all citizens and council members need to have a deeper understanding of our place uh on this earth and a greater spirituality. I want to give you the update on the canvassing that I'm doing in District Three and Four. Flyers have been placed on eleven hundred and forty-six houses, house, house doors. I have signatures now of a hundred and twenty-three people who have signed the name to uh prevent the destruction, the removal of the swale because of the Costco development. I've also gotten some very interesting comments. Council is too accommodating to developers. I have a child who goes to primary school in West Mineral, and I'm concerned for the safety and health. The development will lower my property values. Counselor's response seems to be fairly standard with you all. They say, we're planting six hundred tree, uh, six hundred and two trees. That's our environmental position on this. That's what we're doing. But, do you know that 5,500 cars are going to be visiting the Costco uh store? Five hundred, 5,500 per day are gonna create twenty-two metric tons of CO2 per day. You know how many trees it's gonna take to offset and mitigate that? Eight hundred thousand. Eight hundred thousand trees to take twenty-two metric tons per day coming from Costco. And it's gonna double when you have your other big box store. So I'd like to say, stop greenwashing us. We're not children, okay? Stop greenwashing us with 700. Stop bringing trinkets and bags. So, thank you very much.
Next up is Denny M.
Um, hello, I live in District Four, and I was just kind of adding on to what he said about the-
Can you just take your name for the record, please?
Yeah, sorry. My name's Denny Martin, and I was just kind of adding on about what someone else said about the trail closure. I use that trail multiple times a week to go to and from school and walking home and back during lunch. And because it's closed now, I have to go around, which causes me so much time loss that if I do do that during like lunch, I will be, I'll be late to my class by like ten minutes, and I've, since I was a kid, since, as long as I can remember, and I'm fifteen, that trail's been open, and I've been using it to meet up with my friends. I've seen that busy a lot, and it's, I think it's gonna be very bad for the community with that closed and having to like go around to get access to the trail. Thank you.
Thank you for taking time to come on down and talk to us. That's all we have signed up on general public comment. Is there anybody else that would wish to speak on general public comment? Frank?
Good evening, city council. Uh, Frank Atwood in District Four. Uh, one topic I'd like to mention is applying for city council. There'll be a vacancy, and there's a deadline on the 6th of December here for um becoming a city council member, and quite a number of city council uh higher office holders have started their career by uh applying, filling vacancies, and it is a lot easier to get a majority of city council votes than a um majority of uh Littleton resident votes. Uh, the pool's a little smaller. Uh, as with all politics, we're suspicious that the fix may be in, but um, no one's gonna mention that, and so thank you for that issue. The other is with regards to the easement between the Highline Canal and Jackass Hill. Um, if anyone's been listening to the owner of that property, it's been an issue for her for the past oh, I would say at least ten years, if not forty, and it's, and if you've been using that previously, you've read the sign that um her and her father put up with legal advice, uh, making it clear that that is an issue. And um, I'm curious to see how it's resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank, and I'd love to hear what the fix is, because that's the first time I've heard of it. All right, anybody else signed up, uh, or not signed up that would like to speak? John?
My name is John Marquetti. I live in District Four, and I wasn't planning on speaking this evening until I heard the concern about the pass through. I know the owner. I told her two years ago, put up gates. If you, if you can't get a response from the city, and the previous Public Works Director, she says, refused to return her calls, put up the gates. It'll get the people's attention, and they'll get a result. And I confirmed that I, when I talked to her two years ago, I confirmed recently that that's exactly how she felt about it. She was concerned about the people that through the night passed through there and came over onto her property and looked to see in the windows what was there. If you've been over there to look at the place, you can kind of wonder if anybody actually lives there. She definitely lives there. She likes her privacy. She doesn't appreciate people going through there and then jumping the fence to investigate her, her house. And so with that, um, she said somebody has reached out from the city, but uh, yeah, she's kind of waiting for legal counsel to, to see what they, they say. If anybody has any questions about it, feel free to come and see me.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience that did not sign up that wish to speak, please? Come on down.
Hi, council. My name is Pam Chabron. I live a block and a half from here, and it's great to see so many public speakers. Thank you all for coming and speaking. Um, it's great to have company up here. So first off, the Jackass Hill um shortcut has been an issue for the city for years, and the city has not addressed it. We've had several city managers, several councils, and I will say, you have failed. It's not we have failed to address it. Our staff and councils have failed to address this, even though it's been identified for years. So, council, I think you have issues like that before you now. You're embracing things that you aren't urgent and don't need to be done now, and are very expensive and risky, and not doing things that really need attention, basic work that are about public service. And uh, so the Jackass Hill Trail is one example of that, coming home to roost. Um, so, uh, pay attention. What can you do now to prevent future problems like this, and uh, let's see what happens with this one? For birds home to roost, uh, some of the our code could require is bird-safe glass. Uh, we're doing a whole bunch of new construction. Birds run into windows at night and during the day. Um, we could require bird-safe glass. It reduces collisions of birds and deaths of birds. Do we have anything like that? Have we ever talked about it? No. Um, do we have a tree interest in the city in the code? Yes. Do we have anything that talks about the wildlife and the habitat that comes from trees and landscaping? No. Those are means to those ends. Wildlife and habitat are part of what our city needs to accomplish with our land use code. We're failing to do that. Your proposed updates, your staff's proposed updates, don't address them. Uh, so we need wildlife and habitat considerations in our land use code. Um, please pay attention to that. Uh, I want to mention the vacancy, and I mentioned this last week too. Um, the write-up does not talk about the job requirements. The first thing it should say is that your term would be from January to November, uh, ten months, and you gotta show up on Tuesdays, and uh, these are other job requirements. And it could include the pay or something like that. Did this job requisition mention the requirements for the applicant? No. What it does say is you have to tell us how well you're gonna play with us. And I, as a person who live in Littleton, feel poorly served by this announcement. I want the people who want to work up there for us as public servants to know what their job is. That should be the first thing in the vacancy. Um, I have more to say, but let me just thank you for the fee schedule, white wastewater and stormwater. Thank you. We need to pay for that. I thank you for taking care of that business. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam. Last call. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, we're gonna move on to uh council member reports. Start with council member Driscoll.
Uh, yeah, just wanted a shout-out to staff and the Downtown Development Authority for the uh lighting of Littleton, the, the Candlelight Walk, and um, I thought that was really well done. Hopefully all you got, you got a chance to come down for that. And a reminder that tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, we have the Historic Downtown Littleton's Merchants Meeting at uh the Town Hall Building at eight o'clock AM. Everybody's welcome to attend that too. Thanks.
Councilmember Ryden.
No report, mayor.
Councilmember Peters.
Um, I don't really have anything to report, except that I think it is our city attorney's birthday today, so happy birthday.
Well, you took my report. I was, we were gonna sing him happy birthday, so I guess we can, council, council member Riker.
For you, Pat, no report.
Councilmember Grove?
I have a couple things.
Shut.
Um, first of all, and maybe we'll go back to council member Ryden on this. Uh, we met with the city, our whole council, along with uh Sheridan Inglewood, met to get an update on our homeless initiative and all the investment we've put in, and heard about the plans, um, what we've done, and what, where we're going forward. And it was a great update, good discussion, and if we want to go back to you, it gives more update on that. Um, so we're very pleased, I'm very pleased about um where we're going and what we're doing, and how we're helping people that are unhoused. A second thing is, many of us went to the Candlelight Walk. If you haven't been, it's a whole lot of fun. Um, there's a small parade, and then there's a drone show afterwards, and um, all sorts of fun stuff. It's the day after Thanksgiving, so if you didn't go this year, try to go next year. A couple things that are coming up on Friday night, the Littleton Symphony is gonna have their holiday show. Um, so if you want to attend that, there's lots of Christmas music. And on Sunday night, uh, the Littleton Museum is having their holiday uh event. So if you haven't been to those, those are some things that are coming up in the city, and there's probably a lot more, but those are two things that stand out.
Mayor Pro Tem?
No report.
All right, I just have a couple things. First off, um, just this afternoon, I got a email uh to schedule a meeting with the National Fitness Campaign, Building Healthy Communities. to schedule a meeting with the National Fitness Campaign, Building Healthy Communities. And so, I'll meet, I'm going to meet with them on Thursday and report back to staff and see. They, they hit it in the subject line of grant opportunities. So, we'll see if we can get some money for, for something there. It was about building on like fitness activity centers and parks and things. So, we'll see what that has. I did want to address some comments by the citizen about the swale and House Bill 211266. That, that bill is specific for census block groups where the proportion of households are low income, identify as minority, and the cost burden is greater than 40%. So, I, I don't see how this is, there's a nexus with this area because Littleton, the neighborhood down there does not fit with that area right there. And this idea that we're going to take away all the trees and all the green space, there are going to be more trees and more green space on the new development. We've gone through this multiple times. You can see it on the website. And so, I think it's quite disingenuous that we're saying we're paving over everything. There's going to be less parking lot, less concrete, more green space, more trees. Right now, it's a vacant piece of land that is doing no good for the city. Yes, the swale is dice and there will be a buffer between mineral and the development there. So, just want to get that on the record. Finally, for Council, there's Thursday morning. I don't know if you all get the notifications about the Jefferson County Commissioners. Okay, you guys do. Okay. Just wanted to put that out there because Jefferson County does it with all electeds and Arapahoe County does it with just the mayor. So, just make sure that's on your agenda. And then, yeah, I was going to say happy birthday to Reed as a birthday present rather than go to the city manager first. We're going to throw up the city attorney first for his, his comments, putting him on the spot.
Woo!
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a brief update on the status of the Meadowwood Purchase Agreement. Obviously, this has come before Council in the past when Meadowwood was looking for funding options. Just as an update, everything looks to be on track. A couple of weeks ago, they were awarded about $3.75 million by way of a grant, low-interest loan from DOLA. So, they did secure that. According to their schedule, right now, they had received all the funding requests that, that were needed. And right now, they present all those requests to kind of the folks that would help with the financing in this respect. So, they're doing their title work. They're getting all that secured and they are still, to the best of our knowledge, on track for a closing on January 10th. So, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I do have several things tonight, so I hope you'll bear with me because I do think they're all worth, worth mentioning. First of all, I'm really excited to share that through Placer AI software, which is a cell phone-based service that many organizations use to track crowds, I can share that we believe we had more than 13,000 visitors to the Candlelight Walk on, on Friday, which is coming up on three times the number that we had last year. Of course, there was a difference in the weather, but we think that that's, that's outstanding. We are appreciative of our downtown merchant partner, partners in the, the LDDA for all of their contributions to that, that event, but it was very successful. Second, I just want to let Council know and Council and the public know that we, the process, the annual process we have for filling vacancies on our boards and commissions is, is underway. The application, the information on vacancies is up on the city's website. The application period will run through January, January 31st at midnight. So, we encourage all who might be interested in serving on a wide range of boards and commissions to have a look at the website. Next, I would like to speak to the status of the Jackass Hill Trail issue that we are trying to resolve. You know, this, this property and the property ownership and rights to use go back more than 100 years. And for most of those years, the city has had amicable relationships with a property owner for use of that, that trail. We do have partners in how that area is managed in mostly with South Suburban Parks and REC. I will just say that we're addressing this as, you know, as promptly as we can on two fronts. First of all, we are trying to engage the property owner because as Mr. Marchetti spoke today, we've known of, there've been various reasons over the years that we've had to work through. The city has worked through issues in the past, but we've been able to resolve them. We certainly hope that we can this time and we want to have direct talks with, with the property owner to make sure that we, we know what the issues are and try to work through them. We also are working, the city attorneys leading the work, just to confirm all the property, property rights and property ownership issues affiliated with the property so that we can confidently and accurately work with a property owner to come to the right solution to make sure that this, that that trail section can be open all the time for people. We, staff certainly knows how important this is to the community as part of our, our trail system. So, we want to address it as, as quickly as we can, but we also, I will say, this, this does take some, some time with research and negotiation. So, we're, we're working on it as, as we, we can. Next, I want to let the Council and, and community know that the school zone construction changes on South Illati Street that we talked about at the August 17th council meeting. Those changes and, and construction will be starting tomorrow. So, we've been coordinating with the schools and have made sure that they know how, all of that's happening so that we can work around their busy times. We'll also have more social media just to let the community and the neighborhoods know again about what that, that project is, why we're doing it, and the timeline for construction. Finally, and it's really my, my pleasure tonight, I'll, I'll ask her to make her way up as, as I'm talking here. I get to formally introduce our, our new Economic Development Director, Rachel King. I know that many of you have already had a chance to see Rachel in, in action as she hit the ground running, attending the, the Project Downtown Public Meeting, the Little Man Ice Cream Events, Business Chamber Events and others. And that was just her first week on the, the job. But tonight, it is my chance to just share how excited we are to have Rachel in this role. She brings a wealth of experience and has most recently served as the Director of Economic Develop, Vital, yeah, Director of Economic Vitality and Development at the City and County of Broomfield. During her tenure at Broomfield, she led the business development, economic development and housing initiatives for Broomfield. Rachel has also held roles in the financial sector, academia, and she has, she, and as a, as a legal policy consultant for nonprofits. Rachel's experience in organizational development will be a great addition to our, our city leadership team, especially around our efforts to make Littleton a great place to work for all of our current and future employees. Lastly, I just want to again recognize the excellent leadership that Brian Garner brought to his role as interim Economic Development Director. Brian served in the interim role between May and October and continues to, to do great work for, for the city. I know that Rachel's looking forward to getting to know all of you and we're very excited to have her as part of our team and as a champion for our, our business community. And after all that, I would just ask Rachel to just have a very brief introduction of herself.
Thank you, Manager Becklinburg. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Councilmembers. I'm Rachel King and I'm very honored to be introduced tonight as your new Economic Development Director. Since my arrival, I've been very warmly welcomed by the team and the community and I truly appreciate that. It has been a very busy year for economic development here at Littleton and I'm very impressed with the work that they've accomplished along with the other departments here. As you are well aware, Littleton is brimming with opportunity and activity. I'm very excited to jump right in and contribute to the team's efforts. I do look forward to working with each of you and with our community to make Littleton an even better place, which is a tall order, to live, work and support the business community. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
And that concludes my announcements.
All right. Next up, our scheduled appearances. We have no scheduled appearances tonight. Item eight is Consent Agenda. We have three items in the Consent Agenda tonight. Consent Agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any Consent Agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. We have A, Ordinance 30 of 2024, an ordinance on first reading, amending Title I, Chapter 14 of the City Code Regarding Land Development Impact Fees. B, Ordinance 121 of 2024, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Mile High Flood District Regarding Design and Construction of Drainage and Flood Control Improvements for Lee Gulch at Broadway, Amendment Number One. And C, ID 24286, a motion to approve minutes of November 19th, 2024, regular city council meeting.
Mayor, I move to approve Ordinance 30-2024, Resolution 121-2024, and ID Number 24-286.
Second. A motion, a second from Councilmember Riker, to approve the three Consent Agenda items. Council, any discussion? I just want to say there was a small typo on the minutes that has been corrected. It just erroneously stated that the vote to expend, extend our previous meeting pass 10 o'clock said 7:0 when it was in fact 6:01. And that has been corrected on the website. So, just wanted to make sure that was on the record.
Thank you for catching that.
All right. Voting is now open.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item nine is General Business. All right. Tonight, we have a couple of things on General Business. First up, we have ID 24255, sorry, ID, Resolution 124, 2024, adopting the 2025 Fee Schedule specifically for wastewater, stormwater and affordable housing purposes. We'll have a staff presentation to go through that and then, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just kind of tee it up with a process point tonight. I do want to let Council know or remind Council that last year, you, you asked that we have a study session at the front of our fee setting season to be able to, to talk about fee-setting policies and approaches and how we, we do all of that. The main event for our fees this year for, for, for 2025 will be our development fees. And our fee-setting approach is rooted in a cost of services study. I know that a finance department is still completing that study. So, we do want to have that study session with you. We have a couple of fees we're asking for your action on tonight. These are inflation-based or based, or based on models that are already have been in place for, for years, kind of plans for fee, for fee increases. So, Tiffany will explain more of, of that, but I just want to let you know that we've, we've not forgotten about that. We do want to have these fees tonight in, in place for January 1st if we can, but we also look forward to the study session to talk about the rest of, of our, our fees that have much more policy discussion to them. So, with that, I'll, I'll ask Tiffany to summarize our request tonight.
Thank you and good evening, Council. Tiffany Hooton, Finance Director. This evening, we have a resolution before you, really kind of tackling three items for 2025. And trying to move this forward. There we go. So, we have three changes to the 2025 Fee Schedule for Wastewater Utility Fees, Stormwater Fees and Affordable Housing Fee in lieu. We do have planned in January, as the city manager mentioned, a development review fee study session. So, we like to bring a cost of services study and, and share those results of understanding what the costs are related to providing those services and potentially some other fees. And we'll talk about where they're derived from and have a, a good discussion on those fees. The, we have two enterprise funds in the city of Littleton. One is a wastewater treatment fund and a wastewater sewer utility fund, and the second is a storm drainage utility fund. In 2025, if you recall, we did discuss at our study sessions, our budget study session on, in September. We have an internal rate study that we do on an annual basis. And so, really what that is, is we look at what are our future costs, what are our future capital improvements that we need to do related to the sewer plant and also within the sewer structures within the city limits. And we kind of analyze what those expenditures are, do some modeling into a five-year plan and really kind of identify what do we want those rates to be in the next year. A lot of information goes into that model. We work very closely with the Public Works Department and the sewer plant to understand what some construction projects might be on, tasked for the next few years that really go into what this rate study looks like. And in 2025, we are recommending a 5% increase. This is in line with prior years related to the sewer utility fund. We really try to balance as best we can. We want the rates to be manageable in the eyes of the ratepayers and also ensuring that we're providing funding for future projects related to the sewer utility service. What this equates to for a single-family home is $343.40 annually. We do bill that on an annual basis and ratepayers will likely see that in January or February for that new rate that is going to hopefully be approved and, and supported by Council. On the expenditure side, we do have a, a pretty hefty expenditure related to our treatment plant. And we are looking at about $18.4 million for those operations in 2025. 2.9 million is related to debt service that was issued in 2005, I believe. And that is actually going to be paid off next year. And so, we're really excited to be able to finalize that debt service. And the other new thing that we did add in 2025 that is actually a shared position is between the sewer and storm drainage fund to really just add some more resources to that, those two areas and, and providing some support for, for those teams. Storm drainage, another enterprise fund we have. You're probably very familiar with some of the storm drainage challenges we've had over the last couple of years with some flooding and excess rain. And we, for 2025, we are recommending again a 5% increase. And this is based on current information we have on providing operations and doing some improvements related to storm drainage. I will say that we are planning on bringing some debt funding options to Council in first quarter of 2025. We have some real significant needs in the storm drainage area. We've identified over $8 million of projects that we really need to address so that we can be proactive instead of reactive. And so, we will be bringing that forward in 2025 for discussion with Council. But we do want to establish the fees for 2025 for this fund as well. And we, as I mentioned, are recommending a 5% increase. This is about $118.61 per single-family home. We do have 1.5 million in operations and improvements planned in 2025. And again, we are adding the FTE for the water resources support in this area. The last one that we would like to recommend this evening for 2025 changes is the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Fee in lieu. This was established in 2022 and supported by Council. There is a, some language in the ordinance that does say that this will be increased annually based on the CPI index for the Denver-Rarolakewood area. And in 2023, this was 5.22%. And so, this is going to be our annual increase for 2025 by that 5.22%. Couple of next steps we have. We did mention the, the Cost of Services Study that we'll be bringing in January related to development review fees. And we hope to, and we, we will be presenting that on January 14th. And depending on the outcome of, of that study session, we hope to bring an amended fee schedule for those specific fees that will be implemented in 2025. And just a reminder, we do have a five-year schedule for review of our fees throughout the entire city. And we will continue to incorporate this into our annual budget process. And we'll have more discussions during the, the annual budget review in September so the Council is very comfortable with the fees and, and where they, they come from and why we are recommending certain fees on any annual basis. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions on any of these three recommended fee changes for 2025.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Reiden.
Can you go back to that?
Can you go back to that slide with the five percent, the first one? The three hundred and eighty, whatever that was, um, is that in a, is that the five percent, or is that what the total will be?
That's with the five percent, so that is the total that it will be in twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Driscoll?
We, we've been increasing this, this fund for how long now? Five years in a row or so? Has it been five percent every year increase?
Um, we've tried to keep it steady at a five percent increase. There are some years that it might have been three. Um, if you recall back in, uh, two thousands, um, uh, early two thousands and early twenty-tens, um, it, it might have been more significantly higher than. Um, but really, we try to smooth it out as best we can so that there's less impact and we're not, you know, increasing by fifteen percent one year, two percent the next, zero the next. And so we're really trying to kind of balance that, and that's why we do the five-year rate study plan, um, to make sure that we're meeting any debt covenants that we had and also providing some repairs and maintenance that are needed for the sewer utility.
And what's our current, um, fund balance? I mean, aren't we up around the twenty-two to twenty-five million in that fund?
I don't have that information with me, but I, um, I'd be happy to follow up with you and let you know what that is, but I do know that it is, is around eighteen million. I, I would like to have someone fact-check me on that first, though.
And then, you know, the, the piece I missed earlier in the summer when we did a tour of the plant, um, you know, we're, we should be recouping funds from the, uh, capturing that natural gas that, that... How is that not offsetting some of these, these costs? I mean, it's, you know, five percent every year just seems to me to be, okay, a little bit crazy, I guess.
Yeah, um, uh, you're referring to the biogas project?
Yes.
And, uh, yes, we do recoup, uh, RINs related to that project, and I believe in twenty twenty-five, it's about one point one million, which is shared between, uh, the city. So really what it does is it helps ops, offset, offset costs. Um, so if we didn't have those RINs, we would be paying an extra one point one million related to a plant expenditure. So I really do think it's a great benefit for the plant. Um, it has multiple reasons why we did that, and, uh, without that, we actually would be, um, paying more related to the plant expenditures. And, uh, so I think with that, it does help us keep the rates as low as we potentially can.
Okay, and fi, and finally, the IHO, what are we, what is the developers currently paying? We're increasing it to five point two two percent, but we're taking it from what to what?
The numbers were in the...
They are, yes.
Packet.
This is like really small. Um, so, um, the, the information was in your packet. It's an attachment for, on, uh, page three, if I recall. And, uh, it kind of depends. So, uh, initially, the development currently is three hundred and seventy-five thousand, um, for available for sale units, and then it's, uh, three hundred and forty-four thousand two twenty-one for rental units. And that's increasing the five point two two percent to three hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred and seventy-five and three, uh, sixty-two, one eighty-nine. And, uh, there is a discounted piece, uh, depending on if it's seventy-five percent or fifty percent of, um, total development costs.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions? I do have, uh, do you, Mayor Protemp? If you do, go ahead. Oh, um, uh, let's see. I had a couple of questions regarding the, to follow up on what Councilmember Driscoll was saying. With that five-year rate plan, do we have a five-year, uh, fee plan as well that we're gonna look on the future and say it's five percent every single year?
Right. Currently, we do have programmed five percent for the next five years, but we do, um, we're having lots of discussions with the sewer plant, and, um, there's a, uh, uh, some regulations that are coming along that we are gonna have to address. Um, but currently, we do have it at five percent on an annual basis in that five-year plan.
And remind me, is there were, was it this, was it both the storm water and sewer funds or just the storm water fund? There were two years where it was forty percent increase.
Correct. That was on the storm drainage fund side. We did a three-year phase-in, so the first year was fifteen percent, and the next two years were forty percent. But I think it's important to understand the dollar amount that it was initially.
Right, it was at like twelve dollars a year.
It was very, very low initially, so while the percentage may seem higher, the dollar amount is, is much less.
Okay, but I mean, I do sympathize with Councilmember Driscoll. I mean, if we're going at five percent every single year, we've got to figure something out, because we're gonna be over a thousand dollars here in, like, ten years.
One, one last question. On the expenditures, eighteen point four million, are we, is that, are we splitting that with Thingwood, or is that just our expenditure?
That is the city's portion, so not all of that is related to the sewer plant. Some of that is internal costs related to personnel or repairs to our interceptor or repairs to sewer lines within the Littleton city proper. Um, so it, it is a combination of both.
I'll just add that, you know, those are, um, the, a capital investments plan for the, uh, treatment plant are, you know, in the, uh, thirty millions dollars, starting, you know, within the next five to ten years. Uh, and we can certainly share the kind of detail on the annual spend plan, but as Tiffany alluded, it's important, we think, that we kind of stay ahead of our share of those costs so that we don't take the chance of, of getting to that, that year and having to really hit rates harder. So, um, having a more, a more predictable plan is, uh, I think, we think the, the best practice to help us. I'm not saying we won't have to vary that ever, but help to meet those future costs that we know are, are coming.
Aren't, aren't we adding, um, new communities like what we had, uh, what, Sterling Ranch? I mean, that's, is that not offsetting some of these costs?
Yes, they also pay their, their shares too, yes. And, uh, they are customers technically to, to us. Uh, they pair, they pay their shares, and then we kind of pool it all to, to pay what, what we need to for, uh, the plant operations.
Um, one more question, uh, or not question, I guess more of a comment with, uh, the IHO. Um, I would like to move forward. This is kind of why I want to make sure we have these discussions and study sessions about impact fees, uh, ahead of voting on them. To, specifically with the IHO, to kind of look at that and see, it's been going for two years now. Um, how can we update that? Are there, I think, I know a lot of other communities in the region have been doing that, so I think, rather than just a flat, uh, fee, uh, increase, I think we need to take a look at that a little more strategically and see if there's anything else that we need to do. Um, I don't know if that needs to be with the January study session, probably, probably not, but I think we need to spend some more time in the future looking at the impact, uh, fees, because these are, uh, are the, the rates that are, really impact our, our residents. So, that's all I have.
Mayor, can I, uh, address, uh, Patrick's question about the fund balance on the sewer fund? So this is why I want to check, right? Um, so in twenty-two, twenty-two, our ending cash was about eighteen million. Um, in twenty twenty-three, it went down to about ten point nine million, and in twenty twenty-five, we're expecting it to be seven point four million. So we are spending down, um, that, uh, cash balance.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance, uh, thirty dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance on first reading amending Title I, Chapter fourteen of the city code regarding, uh, I'm sorry. My mistake, scratch that. Resolution one two four dash twenty twenty-four, resolution adopting the twenty twenty-five fee schedule specifically for wastewater, storm water, and affordable housing purposes.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion, Mayor Protemp?
Yeah, I just wanted to say this for a statement period, but yeah, uh, you know, five percent, uh, increase per year may seem like a lot, but, you know, um, in, in my experience, that's actually very good preventative practice to overcome the enormous capital needs that we're going to be seeing in terms of rehabilitation of our collection system. And we've already seen kind of the failure of that on the stormwater side with the kind of culvert collapses we're seeing and the cost that it's taking us as a city to do, uh, emergency repairs instead of the preventative maintenance. And our wastewater collection system is gonna be in the same bucket. So a five percent rate increase per year is actually not unusual. Um, my day job, um, I am actually gonna be proposing a hundred and thirty percent rate increase for a one piece of water main for a small town. Um, and so, you know, when you don't change your rates or keep up with that cost of inflation per year, you can get absolutely hammered, um, in, in out-years when you have those big capital outlays. So, but to your point, I think, you know, five percent is not nothing to, to our citizens and our residents, and I just want to say that the money is going to good use. There's a reason that we're doing this slow and steady. Um, and it is to prepare for the eventuality that we are gonna have to take, uh, do a lot of work underground in the very near future. With the Consumer Price Index, I, to, I just want to echo the mayor's comments too, that I think it is worth us having some insight and, and thought into, uh, into that process to see if the CPI rate of inflation on the affordable housing work is, is the right methodology. Are we achieving the right balance of build and fee, um, and flexibility in that regard? So, um, but I'm, I'm for staying with the plan as we currently have it, at least for now.
Well, the residents of that unnamed small town are gonna love you. Any, any other comments, council? We do have a motion and a second to approve, what was it, resolution one two four? No, it is now.
It is now, sorry.
Voting's open.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, great. All right, thank you. Next, next up, we have now ID two four, uh, two five five, motion to approve, uh, amendment to the city attorney's employment. And then we also have ID two four two eight two, uh, motion to approve an amendment to the city, uh, manager's employment agreement. Um, so I'm just gonna, there's, I'm not gonna ask the city manager or the attorney to present on that, but, uh, just for, uh, public's, uh, um, assumptions. So council, we worked with a, uh, facilitator to go through our annual, uh, employment evaluation with both of our direct reports here. Uh, we had, uh, kind of talked about the goals we looked at, uh, the process of how to do that. We provided feedback to both the city attorney and city manager. Uh, we had three executive sessions. One was held on September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, another one October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and another one on, uh, November nineteenth. Um, so we discussed the evaluation, provided feedback, and then discussed compensation. And so based on our, uh, evaluation, which council individually, uh, evaluated, and we had, uh, staff evaluations as well, so we looked at, uh, the staff side and the council side, and we determined that both, uh, uh, city manager and city attorney, uh, would be given a three point five percent, uh, annual salary increase, which was consistent with the entire, uh, employment, uh, employees of the city, uh, increase there. So that's where we are right now. They both had, uh, uh, positive reviews. We, we, we wanted them to stay and continue working with us. Um, I know it's always been, I know direct reports always get a little fret, uh, fret a little bit when councilors talk about their, uh, uh, performance, but we have a good city manager and a good city attorney here, so I think we're pleased to continue working with them and look forward to that as, as well. And so I think I just took Tracy's, uh, presentation a little bit there, too, but, uh... Does Tracy, do you want to add anything, Tracy?
You know, you, you covered it perfectly. That's about what I had, so.
Uh, council, any other, uh, um, feedback on that before we get into it? What we can do each one individually? If you guys want to say anything before we vote, or either way.
Yeah, I might as well just make comment right now. I just want to say how much of a pleasure it has been working with you both over these number of years, and, um, I hope the, uh, thank you, Reed. And I hope that the, uh, feedback that we provided as well, um, not just the compensation package, but the feedback that we provided is gonna help you do your jobs better. So, um, you know, I just want to say to the public too, that I think this council, our staff, the process by which we do these evaluations has come a long way. Uh, so much appreciated on helping us evolve this process by which we do these evaluations over the last few years, because I think we have a much more, um, uh, objective kind of way to make determinations about compensation, which quite frankly, in, in this position, can be quite difficult. Um, and for the public's knowledge, um, you know, this is not, this is not a particularly easy task. It is actually somewhat difficult to say, how do you compare one manager or one city to another with regards to that compensation? Is it size? Is it staffing? Is it roles and responsibilities? And how do you factor performance into that? And I think we've done a, a great job at really honing in, like, and we're still looking to continuously improve that process in the coming year. So again, thank you for your work.
Councilmember Riker?
I would like to echo, uh, councilmember or Mayor Protemp Barr. Um, first of all, I think the process went really well. I, I did this process for eight years in my prior elected role, and I feel like we're, we're, uh, the process we used was better than the process I used when I was president of the school board, and I, I think, uh, so I appreciate that getting set up by, by you, and I appreciate our, my colleagues, who I feel like we had an effective process. And I feel like we did a very good job of collaborating on kind of sharing our perspectives and, and coming to kind of a conclusion. I think it was a really effective process, and I'm grateful to be able to participate that. And then I want to echo what, uh, uh, Mayor Protemp said, Reed and Jim. You know, we really appreciate your work for the city, and we're grateful to have you here, and, and I hope that was reflected in, in what we, what we did. So, thank you.
Any comments? Seeing no comments, I'll entertain two motions.
I move to approve ID twenty-four dash twenty-five, motion to, uh, amend the city attorney's employment agreement and ID twenty-four two eighty-two. Did I say the number?
Yeah, they have to be done separately, Councilmember Riker.
Thank you for that help. I move to approve ID twenty-four dash two five five, a motion to approve amendment to the city attorney's employment agreement.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No, no amendments from the dials? Good, okay. Voting's open.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
I move to approve ID twenty-four dash two eighty-two, a motion to approve an amendment to the city manager's employment agreement.
I'll second.
Motion and a second from, uh, Councilmember Reiden. Uh, any further discussion or amendments? See none, voting's open.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Take five? Sure, we will have a request for recess since then. We're gonna have a little bit of discussion moving forward, so... No, you want to take a five-minute break? Yeah, we will going forward, though. So we'll be back in five minutes at seven thirty-seven. We are back in session. We're going through item 10, ordinances on second reading and public hearings. We have three tonight, two of which are ordinances. So speakers wishing to address counsel as part of public hearing will be limited to three minutes, and will be called upon when, public comment portion for each of those three hearings. First up, we have item A, ordinance 28 of 2024, ordinance on second reading repealing and reenacting Title VIII, Chapter 1, Streets and Sidewalks, general regulations. So we will have staff presentation, and the counsel has questions, and we'll have public comment, and then motion, votes. So, city manager?
Thank you, mayor. Counsel heard a study session on this topic on August 27th, and so that's, we're bringing back to you tonight. And I will share, I will send it over to our Public Works Director, Brent Soderland, for a summary of the ordinance.
So, good evening, mayor and city council. So we'll just kick right off. So what is public right-of-way? Really, it's property that's owned and regulated by the city. And also, it's, you know, it's mainly our streets and our roadways and our sidewalks, and it's a place for public and private utilities to be located. So, when do you need a right-of-way permit? You need to require a right-of-way permit for any temporary or permanent work activity that's occurring within our right-of-way. And that could include the installation of a water line. It could be a service tap into one of our sanitary sewer mains. It could be the installation of fiber within the street. It could be something as simple as like a roll-off dumpster for somebody doing house construction. So our main purpose for updating this is, basically, we wanna streamline our permit process, and we wanna make sure that our public works utilities is up to current practices. We wanna provide greater protection for users of our right-of-way, and we want to make sure that our regulations and our enforcement mechanisms are updated. So I won't go through all the amendments, but really, I think staff has done a good job of updating our code to meet a few of our goals, which is really to make sure we're balancing public and private use of our right-of-way, and make sure we maintain safe passage for our pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicles, so making sure that our traffic control plans are up to date. Also, we wanna protect public and private utility installations, and we wanna ensure that the work is done in a timely and cost-effective manner. And so really, we've updated, you know, the insurance requirements to make them consistent, financial securities for work that's done in the right-of-way, and we've set standards so that work is restored, or so that our right-of-way is restored in a proper manner. And I believe that, I'll take questions. I guess, Reed, is there anything else you wanna add?
Yeah, I'll just chime in. I think when we took a look at this ordinance, our right-of-way provisions, I think one of the items that jumped out to staff was, in terms of kinda what the problem was, is we required a permit in terms of working in our right-of-way, but we actually didn't define what that meant to anyone. So when you went to our code, it would be really challenging to find out what some of the legal requirements would be, and as we go through and we flesh out all these details, it's very transparent in terms of what it is that one needs to do, the process that goes into place. We have things that never existed before, like hours of operation. So, you know, this isn't happening at midnight or, you know, 2 o'clock in the morning, unless it's an emergency. Things like that, standards across the line for anyone seeking to use our public right-of-way. The need to regulate the activity occurring was of great value to the city. We obviously can't have a bunch of individuals working in our right-of-way in the same section of the street, or else that creates kind of traffic control problems. So this is just an ability, best practices, to go forward and streamline that process to be transparent across the board in how we apply for and apply permits to right-of-way work, so.
Counsel, any questions? Mayor Pro Temp?
Without going through the nuances of the enforcement policy, can you outline what, because this is a new regulation, and obviously, there will be contractors and private citizens that are gonna have roll-off dumpsters, you know, working vehicles, things like that out there. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, maybe some of the outreach and education you're gonna do? And also, do we have a period of, like, leniency in terms of enforcement? Like, we're not gonna go out there and just hammer people with fines, but we'll do some proactive code enforcement? Can you describe that a little bit?
Yeah, I think we can do some, we'll do some public outreach through our communications department, but really, the actual act of applying for the permit has not changed. Really, you go through our e-track system, and you apply for the permit. It's the same as it's functioning today. It's just that we've kinda upgraded all these regulations.
Any other questions? I do have one kind of question. The main rationale, the main focus is people digging into the streets and sidewalks mostly. It's not someone using, you know, putting mulch and stuff out there. I mean, I suppose roll-off dumpsters, if they're there for three months, we wanna know about them, so we can deal with that, but not if it's just a day or something like that, correct?
Correct. So, I mean, really, the main purpose is that if somebody's cutting into our asphalt, that is restored properly, right? And so that's what this ordinance really does, or this amendment.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, if not, this is a ordinance on second reading. I have no one signed up to speak to it. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak towards this ordinance? Seen one person. Come on down, Pam.
My name is Pam Chabron of LeBlanc, and I have from here in, I live on a hill. I've said this before. I care a lot about stormwater and drainage. I also care about utilities under the road. I live in an older part of town. There are sewer lines everywhere. There's little sewer lines for one house that go past three other houses to link up to a main or a collector, and they're all over. It's a very strange part of town, and there's a lot of digging up over time. I would have appreciated some kind of summary of the difference for a property owner in Littleton as a result of this legislation. I'm not sure I understand the implications of all of this to a homeowner on the street, which gets dug up all the time by Denver Water and sewer folks. Guys having houses either infill redevelopment downtown, which you know is going on, or just upgrades to housing, where they have to pay for this impact on the streets. And so they have a right to know, and I have a right to sympathize with them when they're out there looking at what they're paying for to dig up our streets and restore them. I'd like to understand this more. What was the impact and what is it? I hear that, oh, we're gonna have outreach in the future. Well, I would have liked to understand more about how work was done before, and how this might manifest on the street for those of us living there and seeing the work done, and those folks who have to pay for the work at their own dime. That's what I'm gonna say. I'm not sure I understand all of the impacts of this legislation on those of us who live on this, you know, by the streets. Thanks.
Thanks, Pam. Frank?
Good evening, city council. Frank Atwood. As you're discussing easements in general here, I think it would be nice to hear easements in specific with regards to the path between Highline Canal and Jackass Hill. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. We're talking about right-of-way, not easements. Any other public? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public comment period. All right. Your motion?
Yep. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve ordinance 28-2024, an ordinance on second reading repealing and reenacting Title VIII, Chapter 1, Streets and Sidewalks, general regulations.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, counsel? Mayor Pro Temp?
Yeah, I just wanted to address one of the public commenters real quick, too, that, you know, in terms of how this is ultimately gonna impact the public, I actually think this is a great little piece of preventative measure that Public Works and our legal department are taking right now, because it's actually gonna be able to hold contract, you know, outside parties, contractors, private homeowners who are hiring contractors, to be able to make sure that our streets, our sidewalks remain accessible and clear by having a permitting process in place. It's actually gonna allow us to be able to manage our public infrastructure in a better way, make sure that any street finishes, any sidewalk finishes are done according to our code. And I think that's all kind of going towards keeping, you know, the public kind of informed and safe. So I think the impact being felt is not necessarily gonna be in the process by which one goes out and gets a permit, but rather like the neighborhood surrounding the areas that are being worked on. So, yeah, anyway, thank you to the team that worked on it.
Any other comments, counsel? All right, we do have a motion and a second. Voting's open.
The vote is seven in favor, the motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item B is ordinance 29 of 2024, an ordinance on second reading approving a five-year lease with Pitney Bowes to provide a postage meter, postage meter-related services to the city. Broke this over to the city manager.
Thank you, mayor. I know that the city council doesn't often get to see our IT Director, Scott Rogers, but here he is to present this agreement. Just due to the nature of the agreement, this does have to come to council for your approval. So, Scott, take it away.
Sorry. Good evening, council. Good evening, council. Scott Rogers, IT Director. Let me just get this in the presentation mode here. Yeah, so we are replacing the postage machine that we use up front to distribute mail throughout the city, and we provide in-house postage services for notifications, announcements for various events that the city's putting on and things like that. And the United States Postal Service is changing their requirements from IBI, which is Information-Based Indicia, to Intelligent Mail Indicia. And that is happening on December 31st of this year. And so we need to upgrade the equipment. The older equipment doesn't support the new standards that they're implementing, so we had to replace that. And the city code requires that any lease over one year needs to be presented to council. The purchase, or the lease of this postage machine was a cooperative agreement negotiated by a number of states, and it is a 60-month lease. The payment will increase to $505.71 per month, which is just an 8% increase above what we are currently paying for the outdated machine, or soon to be outdated. So our recommendation is that you approve ordinance 29, 2024, for a five-year lease for the Pitney Bowes postage meter and related services.
Any questions, counsel? I just have two. One, probably more for the city manager. So the reason this has come before counsel is because it's a five-year lease. Typically, a $30,000 contract is not gonna come before counsel, and you have the authority, correct?
Correct, ma'am.
And then for IT Director Rogers. Were you gonna go through all 666 pages of the contract there for the public review, too?
I can, if you'd like. The cooperative agreements are very long and very detailed, so most of that doesn't apply to this specific.
Thanks.
Reed read the whole thing.
He read the whole thing, yeah?
Yes. Same with our procurement managers.
A few worried faces in the audience when I said that, so we won't be going through that, so. Thank you. Councilmember Grove?
And this was included in our new budget, the price increase?
It is, we'll be able to facilitate the budget increase of 8%.
So not specifically.
It wasn't specifically something.
It's a $5,000 or $6,000 for fiscal year.
I know, it's just a little bit. I just wanna know if you plan for things like this.
It wasn't, it was a bit of a surprise that the post office was changing their standards, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Really? That's a surprise?
Eventually, they change, so.
Their motion?
Yeah, mayor, I move to approve ordinance 29-2024, an ordinance on second reading approving a five-year lease with Pitney Bowes to provide a postage meter and related services to the city.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, voting's open. Oh, I didn't open public comment. You're supposed to remind me. Yeah. So we have a motion and a second. I'm gonna open public comment. Anyone that wants to speak on this, there's no one signed up? Ms. Chabron?
My name is Pam Chabron of LeBlanc, and I have from here. I'm worried about the postal service, especially in the next four years. We have a historic post office downtown, and so I would like that to stay where it is. But the postal service has been under the administration or control of a private industry guy who really has put many burdens on the postal service. And before that, I've spoken about this before, a burden was placed on the postal service to pre-fund the pensions for the workers. Absurd, and no business would do that to themselves, but Congress did it to our postal service. So I'm really concerned with a transactional person in charge of the federal government, what will happen with the postal service in the next four years. I'm going to ask the city to pay attention to what's going on with the postal service and track that. And I'd like us to be active in protecting the current postal service. I don't want it to go away. I'm not really sure about this particular machine or what it is implementing. I'm suspicious about it because of these attacks on the postal service. And I'd like the city to stand up for the United States Postal Service. We should allow it to expand services into banking and things like that. And we should keep our historic postal building downtown. I'm not sure how related that is to this change that the machine is implementing. Thank you.
Don't thank very much, but.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience wishes to speak? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public comment. All right. So we did have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance. Let me get back to your, if you had voted, I aborted the vote. It's now open.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Council.
You scared me because all the things were orange. I thought they were changing. You had just voted.
You know, on a related aside, the US Postal Service is going to be releasing a Betty White stamp next year, so, yeah. There you go.
And we're getting rid of the penny.
All right. All right, next up, we have item C, which is Resolution 115, 2024, resolution approving an amendment to the future land use and character map for 16 West Dry Creek Circle. I really thought everyone in the audience here was for the previous ordinance here, but it looks like they're sticking around for this one. So I won't forget to open the public comment for this one here. So we'll have a presentation by staff, and then questions, then public comment, and then a motion. So, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm going to just introduce our planning staff. Jared Chipman on Council's right and Terry Whitmore on Council's left. And with that, I will turn it over to Terry to lead the presentation tonight.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, members of council. I wanted to take the opportunity to talk to you tonight about the proposed amendment to the future land use and character map. We often refer to it in short as FLOP. This is under consideration for one particular site here in the city of Littleton, at 16 West Dry Creek Circle. In terms of an overview, what we'll be talking about is the purpose of this request, what the future land use map is, why this is being brought forward to you today, an overview. Allowed land uses that are included within the zoning for this site and how it, the future land use and character map impacts those allowed uses. The actual amendment details and the analysis and recommendation. And then following this, we do have our development team that will be here to present and provide information to you as well. The purpose of the request is to determine the consistent use allowed within the conditionally approved corridor mixed zoning district that was set from the planning commission meeting in November. And to also consider tonight the current designation, which is suburban commercial within our City of Littleton Comprehensive Plan. And then also look at the requested amendment to the future land use and character map to suburban residential multifamily. I should note that both current and requested designations within the future land use and character map are allowed within the corridor mixed zoning district. So we'll be talking a little bit about that because there is, there are a lot of questions related to what is land use, what is zoning, and how are they connected? And why this is being brought up today as a kind of a result of proposed development? Because there are so many things entailed within the corridor mixed zoning district that it really needs to come down to what is a proposed project? And what's that best fit for the land use for that site? The future land use map, as mentioned prior, was an item that's included in our Comprehensive Plan for the City of Littleton called Envision Littleton. It outlines the community's long-range vision up to the year 2040. It's a multi-year and multi-milestone commitment planning for 20 years. The map itself within the document, at the time of approval, which was 2019, and keep in mind that our official zoning map went into place after that timeframe. So the land use map considered what could happen on that property and what would be the appropriate land use 2019. Then we approved the zoning map 2021. So, you know, a lot of it is, is we're making adjustments as future development and the character of the community is evolving over time. So the map itself is a determination of the consistent future land use. And it's, you know, as mentioned before, based on existing zoning at the time. That site at the time that the future land use and character map was approved in 2019 was under a planned development designation that was approved back in 1988. So just also note that, that there has been a lot of changes in the community since 1988. And so, you know, that's also one of those criteria we'll talk a little bit later is to look at consistency now and into the future. In most cases, the newly adopted zoning for a site was envisioned in our future land use and character map. But a lot happened in the year 2020 with COVID and what has changed in the market and for development and what we're seeing now in the community as being that development, you know, viability and, you know, at what was proposed at that point in time. And what I'd also note is our zoning, and especially the corridor mixed zoning that's in place for this site, is very encompassing. It includes everything from commercial uses to residential uses and, you know, everything in between. So, you know, once a development is proposed, that appropriate land use needs to fit. And it also, within the corridor mixed zoning, helps to limit what can be built because there is so much development potential in the corridor mixed zoning site. As I've mentioned prior, the actual map, the future land use and character map was in 2019. The zoning map was adopted in 2021. And so that's in 2021 where that corridor mixed zoning underlying designation was put in place. And so even though that site for 16 West Dry Creek had a planned development from 1988, a developer or proposed development could develop a master development plan, bring that forward to then provide that development potential in the corridor mixed zoning that's underlying. And then that now would take place and precedence over a planned development designation. And, you know, the other thing, just to mention here, kind of at that last bullet, is that amendment to the character map is something that we have been characteristically bringing forward once we have a development potential that may or may not fit with that land use designation once we know what that more refined land use and appropriate character for the community is determined. And we've seen this on some of the other developments that have come forward to you. We had one back in December of last year with the Embry Project where it was brought forward and that land use needed to be modified based on the development. So it's something that we do characteristically need to bring forward to council for consideration.
Councilmember Riker has a question.
I just want to see if I can recap what you just said because that was a lot of tech terms and stuff that's not language that I'm used to hearing. So essentially, you said in 1988, a developer put forward a planned development, and that created the zoning for this area based on that planned development. And then that zoning plan, or that plan for what's supposed to be in that land, was incorporated in the 2019 future use map. The map, the plan from 1988 was essentially integrated into the 2019 map. So that's where that expectation came from. But then, in 2021, the prior council put a new underlying zoning for this area that was more lenient essentially than the planned zoning, or the plan, future plan map. And so that created a disconnect between what is the future land use map, which is based on hopes in 1988, and the 2021 ULUC, which was less restrictive and based on a different perspective on what could be built there. Is that relatively close? Better than my reading of the last?
I think that's, if I may, I think that's pretty close. The only, the only difference, I would say, that slight item is that there was always that baseline zoning in the old zoning that had this plan document over top of it, or in conjunction with it, right? So then when the new zoning occurred, that plan document still stayed there, just the underlying zoning changed. So sometimes that's really impactful, like the plan documents can talk about, uses can talk about setbacks, et cetera. And other times, it's not as impactful. Sometimes a plan document doesn't get into that amount of detail. And so the underlying zoning is more important in those cases. In this case, the plan document did have a lot of detail in it. But yeah, there's always been that underlying zoning, but that zoning changed to a more permissive zoning now.
And you can think of, you know, think back to overhead projectors back in school. You know, you have a zoning sheet, and then you lay over an overlay of a new zoning on it. That might help you see how they're laid over each other.
I feel like you're calling me old.
I remember overhead projectors, so I'm trying to connect with you here, Robert. Councilmember Grove?
Can you clarify, the PD is for the residential area or the commercial area?
PLO is for the.
The one that we're discussing today is for the site. And it requires, the existing PD requires a certain use, which is office. And so that's, that's what the existing PD discusses.
There's no PD for the adjacent residential area? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. That's just underlying zoning.
Thank you.
All right, continue.
All right, thank you. Just wanted to give a feel, as we've talked about, the extent of land uses that could be potentials for the corridor mixed zoning because that particular zoning district has so much potential and so much, you know, really involved with what could be allowed, noting it is a mixed zone. So all the bullets in front of you on the screen, everything from an estate residential to a suburban commercial, which this site is currently designated, can take place within a corridor mixed zoning district. So that's where getting a little more refined in which land use is most appropriate for the site and why this is being brought forward to you today. I would note that the suburban commercial compared to the suburban residential multifamily that's being requested for amendment tonight, suburban commercial actually is potentially more impactful to the site. It allows heights up to 91 feet with sustainability standards put in place. The proposals that are being looked at more at a suburban residential multifamily would only be a maximum of 65 feet in height with sustainability standards put in place. So kind of thinking through that, it's numbers, it's almost 30 feet higher could be allowed under a suburban commercial. You could have mixes of uses from a tanning salon to, you know, a little food store to a tavern with outdoor patio, a lot of things that could be. And even noting that, it can have less setback. So just kind of wanted to give the feel of what it could look like on that site with the suburban commercial land use that's there currently versus what's being proposed with a suburban residential multifamily, which can only be residential in use. So we've talked a little bit about this, but just looking at definitions, I think, often is helpful of land use being, you know, and a lot of this definition is just pulled right out of our Comprehensive Plan, determining the purpose for which land structures are intended to be occupied, maintained, leased, rented, et cetera, into the future, and how that, those desired land uses are considered is how it's depicted on the map. Just a lot of things saying that this is what that 20-year forecast is considering that land use for the site at the point in time that this map was put in place in 2019. And so that's where, you know, the new zoning that was put in place in 2021 is looking at how that land use may need to be considered for amendment. Rezone, which is not what's being considered today, but has been considered for other projects in the city, is where the actual underlying zoning would not allow the proposed development. So you have to change the zoning to allow for the proposed development on a site. And that's when you would make a determination, could be in conjunction with a land use change. But in essence, a rezone would change the official zoning map. So we got two different maps here. We've got the land use map and the zoning map. And the two of them have to be consistent to approve a proposed development.
Can I put in there, where does it say they have to be consistent?
Well, in our Unified Land Use Code?
Exactly where? I looked. I did not see anywhere that says they have to be consistent.
Well, best way to say, if you have that section in particular.
I mean, if you look in the Comprehensive Plan, the definition of the future land use and character map is a guiding document that looks at 20 years in the future. I mean, if we're predicting 20 years in the future for a rezone or change, I mean, I just, I struggle to find where is the requirement for the future land use map to be consistent with the zoning? And it, I mean, if that's the case, the future land use map is already out of compliance with the zoning then.
While he's looking for the, go ahead.
So we, I think this is an interesting question because we find it that it's best practice to align.
That's different than it's a requirement.
Indeed. The amendment to the future land use and character, basically in the section in 10-9-4 talks about, generally, the section establishes a process and then applicability. This section applies to all proposed changes to the city's future land use and character map. So it's not necessarily.
Right. This didn't come from, this came from a MDP. Where is the nexus between the requirement that the future land use and character map be consistent with the underlying zoning or an MDP?
Mayor, if I could jump in, I think the section that is probably most useful is the first section, which is compatibility. So that's in 10-9-4.5C.
That's decision criteria.
Correct.
For, I'm not, we're not even there yet. Why does the future land use and character map have to be consistent with the underlying zoning? It's not, I couldn't find it in our code. I couldn't find it in our Comprehensive Plan. And I'm not trying to argue with any of the regulations or anything here. I'm just, the process of this, to go back to one of the public commenters, I have some deep concerns with of how it's been done here. I'm trying to figure out why we have the order it's been done and why there's a requirement for the future land use map, which we're looking 20 years in the future, to confirm with what's exactly here now.
Yeah, what I can say is that.
Yeah, what I can say is that different cities in different states do this in different ways, and we were more than happy to have the conversation in the future in regards to the practice we want to follow.
But we have a application for us right now. We can't have this in the future. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out why this was brought to us. Where is this requirement? I understand different cities do it differently. Why do we do it this way?
Yeah, and I apologize, this is where, what I was getting to is that this has been our, our past practice. So we do have several applicants that we have indicated that they would need to do this. Typically, that's in regards to our accompaniment with a rezoning. So for instance, we did have the rezoning request and the future land use and character map request with a prior multifamily development.
I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out, why do you tell them that?
Mayor, during the comprehensive plan process, certainly as, you know, I was not here for it, but have, have, have understood it, character and context for, for developer, for development were key. And we were moving toward zoning that was going to be more broad, as was shown on the, on the slide. So the, the character and context, at least as, as part of that process and the practice that the staff have adopted is to reference and, and keep that tension between the future land use map and the zoning. So if, if we have an application that proposes to, to change that character that was part of the, you know, comp plan vision upon which zoning ultimately was, was based, it, it has been our practice since at that, that time council elected to retain authority if you, if council wishes to change the future land use.
I, I understand that. I'm not saying that we don't want to have the authority to change the future land use map. I'm trying to say, why was it?
This, this has been our practice and so that's why we're following through this.
We've done it one, we've done it one time, and that was with the rezone, and we're not doing a rezone here. So I, I just, I, I, I think this, this process, I think, has been confusing for the residents and council as well, kind of the order. And so I'm trying to, I, I think, I'm not speaking specific to this application, this whole thing, I'm more bigger picture, but the fact that it's before us now, I want to make sure that we get the process ironed out properly and correctly, clearly.
Right. Mayor, I'll just say, from a less land use code standpoint, we have wanted to honor that context and setting and the standards from the, it were envisioned in the comp plan. If there is a desired change, you know, staff, we have, have, have wanted to, to bring that to council so that you can, can give us that check that, yes, this, this is appropriate change of, of the future land use for this, this site.
And one last question, then I'll get off my soapbox here. I, I, the, so we have this adoption before approval. I know there was an article in the Independent that suggested, I don't know if it was correctly, that if council does not approve this change, that the project won't go forward. I don't see that anywhere in the code that there is a requirement. So I honestly don't see how council's decision tonight affects the MDP. And that, that's what I'm getting at here is how, how come we're doing this if we're not doing a rezone, which, and, and the future land use is the future land use? How are we impacting any future potential development?
Well, Mayor, I will tell you that the, the master development plan that was approved by planning commission stated that it was conditioned upon this change of the future land use map.
And where did that's?
So it was conditioned. In terms of why this is, why that was a condition, it goes back to the criteria, goes back to the cri, it goes back to compatibility and the city's long stating interpretation that when we're talking about compatibility, we're looking at whether or not it's consistent with the proposed land use category. When we start looking at the proposed land use category, that's when we start looking at this future land use map, which is part of the comp plan, which is required by state law.
Mayor Proton.
Yeah, I, and also, to be honest, I am no expert in this, and so I'm, I'm trying to discern as well. So if you can forgive me speaking aloud or thinking aloud on this, essentially, you have two ser, two sets of requirements, right? The MDP process, as we've seen, does not necessarily need council's approval. That was done by planning commission. That is a hurdle to get through, but it is not necessarily first or only hurdle to get through. In this particular instance, the future land use and character map is a second hurdle. And to the mayor's question, you can't actually, you know, you can't actually build a project without both conditions actually being met.
My point is, I don't, where is that condition that the future land use map has to be?
Because if a project does not conform with the future land use and character map, but it does conform with its MDP, it still can't be built. So there's no requirement that the two actually have to talk to each other. It's project specific.
But it doesn't say it has to conform with the future land use map. It just has to conform with the character and of the area.
Yeah, that's why we're making the character change.
Okay. It's just, it's threading a needle.
It feels, it feels onerous.
I, I, I feel, it feels like where we are is where we are, and this is the question that's in front of us. But I, I, I would like us to make sure that our, our code is clear about these requirements, if this is a requirement we want to have. And so, you know, my, my frustration that I voiced is, is that we've created this problem for ourselves by not making one subservient to another. And, and I, so I guess, I guess I would encourage the city manager and city attorney to help us have a study session on this to make sure that this part of our processes are, are, are very explicit and very clear and, and that we don't create problems for ourselves by having these kind of conflict. In my mind, we have two different maps that conflict over, that cover the same area, and that seems like a self-inflicted problem. And I would, I would like to not have that problem in the future. I would like to address this problem in front of us and not get distracted by that. But thank you.
All right. Let's go ahead and continue with the discussion between land use and zoning.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of background, the, the site in question, it's a four-point, or excuse me, 5.6 acre site, two parcels that are included in this future land use character map amendment request. Site's currently vacant with the exception of one single family home that's on the property. Mentioned that in 1988, the planned development overlay that was proposed for the site was for an office use. Market conditions for office have sharply decreased since COVID. Site has remained vacant and recent market interest for this site has been for multifamily housing development. I know that the developer will talk a little bit more about the market conditions. City initiated a comprehensive rezone in 2021, as mentioned prior. And that requirement after 2021 is that the master development plan will, in essence, allow a site to go to the underlying zoning, which is CM. And then this is a chart in front of you of the surrounding land uses. So it's, I think, important to mention that to the north of this site is single family residential use. Both east and south is suburban and commercial office that's under a planned development. And to the west is Highline Canal. As mentioned, just slightly, a little bit prior in our discussion, there are four key design criteria for an amendment to the future land use and character map. Compatibility. So city council needs to consider the suburban residential multifamily request, if it's a more appropriate land use for the 16 West Drive Creek development site versus the current land use designation of suburban commercial. Designation will help provide mix of housing options for the community, varying income levels, and they are participating. The current proposal of the site does incorporate the inclusionary housing ordinance consideration of building the affordable housing units. Impact mitigation, looking at our Unified Land Use Code, it does incorporate specific impact mitigation standards when you have differing adjacent land uses. Examples of this is looking at the bulk plane standards, which sets setbacks. There is some setback of this, of this site that extends anywhere from 91 feet to 68 feet, I believe it is. Setbacks will be talked a little bit more by the developer. You know, in terms of the suburban residential multifamily, you know, setback from the adjacent, uh, single family residential, the buffering, all those aspects are being considered, including everything from light pollution. So that's something that, within the plans, has been looked at through the various review processes. Comprehensive plan consistency, Littleton outlines land uses, character standards for future in that document. And then that document's overall goal is to provide that quality and diverse community land uses, including housing options, proximity to key transportation corridors. This site in particular is located near the Broadway corridor, which has the, the more rapid bus service and bus stops to connect to the community. And it also is adjacent to a major hospital in our area. Things of that nature are looked at through this review process. And then last is the changing conditions criteria. The future land use and character map was adopted in 2019. As mentioned, the zoning map was in 2021. So looking at how those conditions have changed, noting that it now has, the site has a corridor mixed zoning underlying condition that was brought forward through the master development plan. And then also how the markets changed, especially noting that we had a, a change in how we work now with virtual options since COVID in 2020. And, you know, and then how the need for multifamily housing or all housing options in the region is a top priority. So from the staff analysis, looking at the criteria for the amendment to the future land use and character map within 10, 9, 4.5C, compatibility, impact mitigation, comprehensive plan, changing conditions, reviewing all the information provided through all the review process and provided by the developer, all those standards from a staff perspective have been met. So recommendation from staff is recommending approval to city council of resolution 115-2024, amendment to the future land use and character map at 16 West Drive Creek Circle. And that's from suburban commercial to suburban residential multifamily. Thank you.
Council, questions? Councilmember Reikert.
Are we going to hear from the applicant?
Yes, the applicant's here and ready to present.
Okay, I'll wait then.
Any other questions? I have a couple of questions, not necessarily per the application, but more to the process. And I, you know, I think one of the things that we've had with this is this looks and feels like a rezone. I understand it's not because it's an adjustment to the land use map. But I, if that's, I mean, I think most of the people in the audience think we're rezoning this property here. And I just want to, you know, what necessarily is specific to a rezone? Because everything I read about a rezone, this checks, it's the exact same criteria in our land use code in Title 10. And if you look at every other thing, I mean, it's a application by a private property owner. It's providing a decision on property rights at individual level. We have specific criteria. There's testimony and evidence that went through planning commission to us. It requires a public notice and public hearing. And we have to have, I mean, council has to make a fair and impartial decision based on the criteria. I don't see how this is not quasi judicial on the merits. And so I'm, you know, looking to the city manager here of how do we fix this moving forward? Because there's, there is an issue here, and I don't, I don't want to get this current applicant caught in anything here, but, I mean, it looks like a rezone. It quacks like a rezone. It's, for all intents and purposes, a rezone without being a quasi judicial rezone here. And so I, I just, I, I think with a change this big for the residents and for council, I think there was communication lost in this. I know I brought it up about how we can do this. So I just, what was the rationale? I mean, what defines quasi judicial? I mean, I just listed off the actual definitions of quasi judicial.
I would look to the attorney for that definition, but then I can speak to some process options for future.
Generally speaking, quasi judicial is where, you know, you're acting like a judge. So you're applying specific facts from a case to the underlying criteria. So very much this looks like a rezone. I will tell you that future land use maps, as we look at the visioning of planning documents within the city are largely legislative. So I think that'll be a challenge tonight for council when you hear this application is we're not talking about this specific project and how it fits on this specific parcel. What we're talking about is this specific use. Is residential multifamily appropriate for this location? Does it fit in this location? That's what we'll be talking about.
Yeah, I understand. I think the hard thing is that we do have a very specific project that's been out there, and council is well aware of it. And if council not changing a land use map for 2040 kills a project in 2024, there's something awry. And I'm, I'm not saying the council's going to kill it. I'm just, just hypothetically speaking here. And so, you know, looking big picture, not at this specific application. I mean, this, it fits all the criteria for a rezone here or for a quasi judicial, even if it's still a resident.
I think, Mayor, going forward, we could, could clarify through the code as, as council member Reichart and Mr. Chipman suggested, more of a disconnect there, if that is council's intent. We can, you know, as Jared started to say, different states and different cities do approach these differently. Some do try to keep fidelity between a future land use map and the actual use. Others that I've seen, update a future land use map periodically, perhaps with the, the comprehensive plan. So that could be done every five to seven years or when we do that. It could be part of the planning process, but there could be the conscious choice. So those are some of the policy options that we can explore if, if council would like to kind of change this, this interpretation that we have.
Because I think that was council's intention. I mean, I think council member Driscoll and I and city attorney and the city clerk were the only ones here when we did the comprehensive plan. I don't, and, and the fact that it's not in the code that says the future land use map has to match that, I think this has been a staff-directed policy change where council, I think that we had, we had a future land use map. It's a future land use map. It's not a present day land use map. And so it's my desire to figure out a way to, to fix this issue. I don't know if council also would like that. I see one head nod.
Yeah, I mean, I think to some of the comments that we made, like, we have made this process kind of overly complex and, and cumbersome and like, you know, that's obviously not, we're not going to fix that here tonight. And yes, I think that zoning should be indicative of the future land use. We are essentially approving two different processes for the same kind of, for the same project. And I think my point was earlier that it has to conform with both of them in order to be a project, essentially. Not necessarily that the two maps necessarily have to come together, but our job tonight being that, yeah.
Councilmember Reikert.
I, I, I'm more than happy to concede that there is a value add to a future land use map. And that value add might be kind of, if you have underlying zoning that's particularly broad and the land use map that is particularly narrow, it can create opportunities to, to focus developers. And so, and that's what I would like us to have a robust conversation about, is what is the value add of this and do we want to keep it? is the value add of this and do we want to keep it? This is not the place to do that. I just hope we have a, because, because right, I'm with the mayor right now. I'm convinced that this current process didn't work as well as I would like it to. But I'm also willing to concede that maybe I have something to learn and so we could have a study session and kind of dig into that code.
Any other questions? I do have one more. If, so applicants are here, if we're doing a, just a general land use map, do the applicants get a chance to speak? Because if they're talking about a specific project, that's what we're not here to talk about, though. It's, that's where this is, is not square peg.
Yeah, but it's, it's technically their request to change the future land use map. Our process has been staff gives a report based upon that request and then we afford the applicant opportunity.
Okay, I mean, I'm fine with having the applicant speak. I'm just trying to figure out where does it say in this process? I didn't see in the, in the process for a future land use map that an applicant presents anything because that's not what the future land use map was about.
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously not a scheduled future land use map amendment, so.
But yet it's on our schedule today. I know what you meant.
A regular update.
All right, so is the applicant, would now be the time for the applicant to present?
It's hard to pull these apart. Because if we weren't having an application, we wouldn't have this decision to make tonight. If the decision was different, I know we have to look at the criteria to decide, but if the applicant had a different vision for that piece of land, the decision may be different. It, it, it's hard to unhook it, even though we're supposed to unhook it.
Given the same, the completely same future land use map, you're talking about the very specific, how that impacts it, yeah, I agree. Okay, so I'm going to turn it back to staff. Is the applicant, would the applicant like to speak now or I, or it'd be better after, probably before public comment?
The applicant is ready to present. We have Elise Applegate from Norris Design that will start off, and she has other staff members that will join and provide additional information.
Thank you. One moment while I pull up our presentation here. All right, does someone need to share my screen up or is that mine to do?
Warm them up for you.
Perfect, thank you. Well, thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Elise Applegate. I work at Norris Design. We're here on behalf of the applicant, Vista Residential Partners. And, you know, as, as we discussed, we've worked with Littleton for a long time on this process, confusing as it may be. This has been a, a two-year process with a lot to work out. I'll try not to duplicate too much of what our planner, Teri, has explained to you. And we'll do my best to kind of answer some questions that were brought up in this conversation just now. At this point, you're quite familiar with the site, but it is important to note that it's tucked up in Dry Creek Circle in sort of a back corner, but just about a block off of Broadway. As we've discussed, the envisioned Littleton comprehensive plan was adopted in 2019. The suburban commercial land use designation in that area, it lists primary land uses and accessory or secondary land uses. In all of those uses, residential and specifically multifamily residential, neither of those are, are listed as a land use within the suburban commercial land use designation. So it was our understanding after submitting our first round of the MDP that it was important that we amend the future land use and character map to match the intent of our site. We went into this project looking at our zoning corridor mixed from the 2021 zoning code update with the understanding that multifamily residential was a use by right under that corridor mixed zoning. So here we're looking at, at the two maps, the suburban commercial that's existing and suburban multifamily residential. We, we've already discussed this a bit before my time, but I would like to point out that this site does now include a, a lot on Fremont Avenue. There is no application to change the future land use character of that lot on Fremont Avenue. Its zoning is intended to stay as it is as well. Just want to make sure that that's completely clear. But looking at this plan, you know, Teri brought up that there were nine different future land use categories that could fit with all of the uses permitted by corridor mixed use zoning. So the choice of suburban multifamily residential was very intentional in that it matches the suburban residential uses to the north and the suburban commercial uses to the south. The comprehensive plan actually defines suburban multifamily residential as a subset of suburban residential. So in terms of looking at the decision criteria, there are the four that you need to review tonight: compatibility, impact mitigation, comprehensive plan, and changing conditions. To add on to the conversation that was just had up here, it is very difficult to divorce the, the site plan from the, the map amendment. We have to explain how we meet all of this criteria in context to the plan that we've taken through the review process and in front of planning commission for approval. So my, my presentation will touch on that, but I understand that, that you all are struggling to strike the right balance here. So first up, with compatibility, I had mentioned before, suburban residential multifamily is a subset of that suburban residential character. It's very specifically chosen to keep that more residential character, lower intensity of uses, as opposed to what you see on the other side of Broadway. There's auto oriented commercial with mixed corridor immediately behind it. This land use designation recognizes that this is a, an area of less intense land uses and, and that designation was chosen to be compatible with them. The next one is impact mitigation. And so that's how the amendment, which is brought forth because of the site plan proposal, mitigates impacts to mobility, air quality, water level, noise level, all of those kinds of things. And so we will bring you through the, the process that we went through to get to the site plan as it is today. So going back to fall of 2022, this is a site plan that was submitted with a pre-application. You'll see the buildings are oriented to kind of align with the property boundaries. There are five buildings and this contemplated 228 units. After having that pre-application with city staff, the team took a whole year to regroup. We hired a new architect and completely revised the site plan to reorient all of the buildings so that the broadest part of the buildings were not immediately, or were not oriented adjacent to those property lines. So you can see we have these L-shaped buildings where the narrowest part of the building is what's closest to our nearest residential neighbors. That was very intentional. In that time, we also picked up another property on the western side of the site that created the, the diagonal boundary that had previously been orthogonal, and that gives a little bit more space off the Highline Canal that's intended to be used for detention.
Is that shadowing accurate or would that shadowing, you know, if you go up four or five stories, it seems to me that shadowing would go a lot further to the north?
The shadowing changes throughout the year. So this is intentional to show that there will be some sort of shadow, but that's going to look different every, every other day of the year, whether you're headed toward winter solstice or summer solstice. But there haven't been specific shadow studies done for this site yet. So we took this plan to our second pre-op with the city a year later and to our first neighborhood meeting. And at that neighborhood meeting, we heard from neighbors that they were concerned about the distance of the buffer yard. That's a 10-foot required transition from different land uses. That was initially 10 feet. They told us that was too narrow. There was concern over headlights from parking cars and backyards, concern about not having enough parking, concern about building heights and about some drainage problems that already exist in the neighborhood. So with the first submittal to the city, some more changes were made. With that, just north of the two L-shaped buildings, more parking was added, which pushed the buildings back about 20 feet each to create a little bit more space there. The buffer yard was increased from 10 feet to 15 feet. And a drainage pan was created across the site so that drainage from the east would flow into the proposed detention pond to the west. Going back to our, our next neighborhood meeting, there were questions about how will people access the Highline Canal if this is, you know, because it's such a desirable amenity in the neighborhood and how it gets, kids get to school in the neighborhood just to the northeast of us or northwest of us, excuse me, knowing that there's already a lot of traffic, you know, getting to those spaces, wanting to make sure that there's safe connections. Those are really big tasks to, to sort through, and so we weren't able to address that immediately. So our second submittal had some fire lane revisions and not much else. I did miss in my previous slide that we did reduce building heights from the pre-application time to that first formal submittal. So this is what we had at our second submittal. And then during that time, we got in contact with single-family residential landowners on Fremont Avenue and started a conversation about purchasing that property most immediately adjacent to Highline Canal and using that space as a trail connection to provide opportunities for people to get onto the Highline Canal, to provide safe routes to school and to provide some utility connections. So this is the, the plan as we presented it to neighbors in our third neighborhood meeting. That was an optional meeting, but with such a major change to the site, we understood it to be very important to have another conversation with the neighbors. So this is the, the plan as we brought it forward at that time.
And that access, the, the path on the northwest corner, that's to get to Fremont so you can get to the canal because there's no access.
Correct.
Directly western.
We are not permitted to perform any kind of work or designs on the Highline Canal while it's going through its transition of ownership, and that will take several years. So as, as the plan started out, there was a site immediately adjacent to the canal with no way to actually access the trail.
And then will there be an easement granted to the city for that path?
I don't know what we've got to that yet.
Just tongue in cheek, but not really?
I, I imagine there would be a public access easement since we're specifically considering this for trail use.
Seemed a fitting question for today.
It is. And, and before we move on from, from this plan, we do also want to talk about how impacts are mitigated through the overall site layout. With the corridor mixed zoning, we're required 20-foot front and rear setbacks. So our front is the southern boundary, our rear is the northern boundary. We're providing at a minimum 68-foot setback in that area, so more than triple the required setback. Our two side setbacks are 10 feet each and we've got a minimum of 52 feet. We use some aerial maps to estimate the distance between the nearest residential buildings and property lines. And when combining those with our setbacks, we have a, a minimum of 120-foot building separation to the nor, northern neighbors and 220 feet to our western neighbors. So there was a lot of intention in this site to pull the buildings as central as possible and away from our existing neighbors, knowing that this will be a significant change in the neighborhood. The, the final item up there is the orange buffer yard that was increased from 10 feet to 15 feet voluntarily as well. So the next item in the decision criteria is compliance with the comprehensive plan and whether or not the proposed amendment supports the goals of the comprehensive plan. So we looked very closely at all of the housing and neighborhood goals, goals one through five. We've got the remainder on an upcoming page. Looking at goal number one, requiring a quantity and diversity of housing options that makes Littleton attainable, multifamily housing and rental housing is a more attainable rental option or housing option. And part of our design team will speak to that more as we go on through this process. Looking at the second goal, having suburban multifamily residential in this particular neighborhood, that offers more people an opportunity to live within short walking distance of several schools, the Highline Canal Trail, Littleton Hospital, and Broadway, which is a major transportation corridor. So it is an appealing choice for, for all of those reasons. For the goal that neighborhoods are safe and comfortable, suburban multifamily residential allows for activation in an area, in an office park area that is by and large quite empty on evenings and weekends. And we know that having more people around creates that activity, creates the eyes on the street that make a place safer. It's sort of a natural surveillance situation. Continuing on to housing and neighborhood, item number four, you know, making sure that neighborhoods are carefully managed when headed toward transition. That is a, a, a big part of what we're discussing tonight is how these transitions happen as Littleton tries to provide the, the housing that is demanded. So with our entire explanation of impact mitigation, this, this project has been very carefully managed to make sure that we're being as thoughtful about the design as possible. Housing that supports choice and mobility, that with a multifamily residential site within quick access of the Highline Canal Trail, that provides active transportation options for people. And then close proximity to Broadway provides great bus connections for people living at the site. And then finally, it is not a goal of the comprehensive plan, but a policy in the economy and tax base section. There was a policy written and adopted to evaluate public sector tools such as zoning and options for spurring private sector interest and reinvestment in vacant and underutilized commercial properties. While this property is currently a single-family residence, it has been zoned commercial for a long time. It has never been developed in that manner, and we feel that this application really fits that policy as well. And the final criteria is changing conditions. As we've discussed, the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2019, the zoning was adopted in 2021. A lot changed in that time that likely influenced that zoning code update. But from, from the perspective of, of just this application going into the city, the zoning changed. And the zoning allows for multifamily residences and the comprehensive plan does not. So that is the, the change that was not anticipated by that comprehensive plan at that time. So we've, we've run through all of these decision criteria and will be glad to discuss them more. But with that, I am going to hand it off to my colleagues who will be able to address some topics that always come up around development that we think are relevant to the application.
Are they going to proactively discuss it or answer questions?
Proactively.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Ben Leach with HKS, the traffic engineer on the project, everyone's favorite topic to discuss. So part of this project was completing a traffic impact study to analyze the impact of our projected site traffic on the existing intersections surrounding the project site. Prior to starting the study, we did meet with city staff to determine scope of analysis and which intersections we would be analyzing. So working through the study, been working very close with the city traffic engineers, Aaron and Kyle, just to make sure we meet all city criteria and properly address all their comments that we've received throughout this process. So first slide we're looking at here summarizes kind of our overall findings for the study, which shows the level of service comparison for the traffic operational characteristics at Broadway and Dry Creek and then Dry Creek Circle and I guess Dry Creek Circle. So what we're looking at here is the background traffic, level of service compared to background traffic with our site traffic included. So just kind of rehashing that background traffic if no development went in compared to, with the addition of our site traffic. And from this, we can see that no instances where the addition of our traffic makes any lane groups or turn movements get any worse than a few cases where there already are some poor levels of service, but the addition of our traffic does not create any new issues or cause any conditions that would warrant the addition of new roadway modifications to existing roadway network.
Councilmember Wrighton.
I, I need you to take a little more time. I don't understand a thing on this picture you're trying to show me.
Gotcha, sorry. There's two stop signs and a stoplight.
I got that. Oh, I do.
Overall operational characteristics at the intersection, the level of service are the letter grades for each movement ranked A through F. So anything A through D is considered acceptable, anything less, so your F is considered poor. The background, the bold and black. Um, the background, the bold and black, that's without our site traffic. Uh, different shade, that's with site traffic added. So at these two intersections, you can see it's same level of services with and without our traffic.
So the letters aren't changing.
Yes.
For what they are currently.
So to the, um, bottom left-hand side of the stoplight, you have D, 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 E, right? So doesn't that say that PM peak gets worse at that turn? Is that not the right interpretation?
Double check that one real quick.
Yeah, I, I, I wish I had my laser pointer if I was.
Right, I, yeah, I see the one you're looking at here, let me just confirm. I do apologize, that is a error up there. That should be D for background and total traffic.
And, and then along those lines of your question, Councilmember Reckert, there's an improvement going southbound, turning west on, from Broadway on to, um, Dry Creek Road there, goes from B to A and then C to B. Is that also correct or are the parentheses during peak it would get better? Or that's, no, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, the, the black is the background and the brown is.
Correct, yeah, so background B, total traffic C, then A and B. Yep. And then this same slide looking up at Fremont as well, just, uh, same comparison, background traffic versus total traffic. And again, just to kind of summarize the study, just looking at these intersections, the addition of our site traffic doesn't cause any movements to, um, go from acceptable to unacceptable or warrant any new improvements like new turn lanes or modified any signal timings.
Got it.
Could, just a really stupid question. Should I be comparing the letters in brackets with the letters in brackets? Or should I be comparing the letters outside the brackets with the letters inside the brackets?
Uh, out, outside the brackets to outside the brackets, from black to the brown.
So this is telling me on southbound Broadway at Fremont, the change is from A to A and A to A.
Correct. So level of service, which is just the range of average vehicle delay times. The average vehicle delay does not decrease enough to change from A to B or B to C. It's still, it stays the same from A to A.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Peters has a question.
Can you go back one slide?
Yeah.
Um, I went to the third meeting that you guys hosted, which thank you for doing an extra one. And there were some business owners there that I had also heard from. I encouraged them to come based, traffic was their only concern. What happens if that stop sign to the left becomes a four-way stop? Does that screw everything up? Because coming out, going south at that stop sign, it is a very blind corner. And I don't know when your traffic study was done, but I've, I've done that stop sign a lot of times and it is actually a very blind corner. And I, whether there's more traffic or not, I kind of think the city needs to look at whether or not that should be a four-way stop. And it seems like if we add residential, it's more pressing.
Um, that is more analysis that we could look at there. The, uh, volumes on each approach would have to be high enough to warrant that. But definitely something we could look at with the city to see if that could improve safety at that intersection. Just one other slide, uh, that we wanted to look at was a comparison of our site-generated trips, um, for our proposed land use multifamily compared to if it was a, a general office building going in on this site. So looking at the comparison there, the multifamily site does, does have more overall total daily trips, but ultimately less peak hour trips than, um, the, sorry, it's less than the general office building site. So the multifamily land use generates more total daily trips, but less peak hour trips because it's different traffic patterns between the two. Like for the general office building, everyone's coming in, leaving same time AM, PM, while residential site, um, different traffic pattern throughout the day. It's not necessarily everyone is going to work, leaving at the same time. So that's why the peak hour trips are different from multifamily compared to office. So that was just one other comparison that we wanted to look at. And that's all I had for traffic slides and any questions.
I've got one, one quick question on traffic. If you can go back up two, to the first intersection, that one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there is a right in, right out at Broadway and Dry Creek Court farther south. Was that included in your study?
We did look at that intersection, and since it's right in, right out, all the level of service there was same as these ones, no, uh, no movements.
This, this reflected that right in, right out, because if there's people going south on Broadway, they could just go south on Dry Creek Court there, and it wouldn't really impact that.
Correct, yeah.
Dry Creek Road, man, we gotta change these names.
Yeah, we did look at that intersection.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And with that, I will.
Councilmember Grove has a question on traffic.
Here are a question and comment. Are we not doing comments yet?
Not comments yet, just questions.
Pass this off then. Thank you.
Uh, Tyler Erickson, Vista Residential Partners. Um, before I jump into some boring facts and figures and data, uh, yes, this has been a confusing process.
Please ignore the boring facts and figures, just the exciting ones.
Uh, well, traffic's not exactly exciting. Um, so before I jump into this, uh, yes, this process has been confusing, um, for everybody included, including staff. And I think staff tried to do their thing that they thought was best for the community, for the direction that they've done on prior projects. So while it is confusing, um, I think they tried to do the right thing. I will say that I've, I've done development in the front range for the last 12 years, um, working in many municipalities. The problem we have here is usually when a, a future land use comp map does plan for the future, when you guys update your zoning code, that usually replaces the future land use comp map. So it should be done administratively by the city. And all the categories that Elise showed you earlier, the suburban auto-oriented, the suburban residential, the suburban multifamily, those are all uses that we could do under the commercial mixed corridor zoning. So that's a process that probably should have been done administratively. Why it wasn't done, I don't know, uh, but typically in other cities, that's what I see done. So then we, the developer, know what land use is allowed underneath the zoning code. We know what rules to follow, what criteria to be, to abide by. Um, so that's, that's my perspective. This is a little bit backwards that we're here in front of you today after receiving planning commission approval on the project. Uh, but here we are. So, uh, hopefully some of the information gave you guys something to chew on and at least know what you're voting on tonight. So anyway, um, we have a housing problem, we have a math problem. Um, nationwide, locally, statewide, uh, it's in the news federally, statewide. Um, our population grows at twice the rate of the nation in, here in Colorado. We haven't built enough to keep up with that population. This is just a general take on the United States, um, where it's all underbuilt, um, ranging from one and a half million to five and a half million housing units. Uh, Colorado specifically is 105,000 short, and that's based on today's figures with our population today. Our population will continue to grow. As you notice on this graph, it's always above 1% except in COVID. So those facts and figures will continue to get worse, unfortunately. Um, in your envision Longmont, or envision Littleton Plan, um, 6,500 units short as of, uh, thinking about a year ago or whenever that was done. So what we're really here to talk about is the cost of homeownership and who can afford to live in Littleton. The pandemic, I mean, it's always been more expensive to buy a home than it is to rent, but the pandemic really, really threw this out of whack. So these figures and facts are for Denver front range communities as an average. Um, it's pretty insane what it costs to buy a median home in the Denver front range. These facts and figures are for Littleton, median home price as of end of October, 652. Uh, interesting note, the graph on the upper left is you pay more or about the same in mortgage interest than you do. It's about equal to rent. That doesn't include the equity you're building. So you're, you're throwing money away. Um, rent is actually an affordable way for people to get into this community. Um, before I back up, um, to equate those figures into a salary, you guys are doing a big hospital expansion. It's $153,000 in annual salary to afford a median home price in Littleton. Um, I looked at Zillow today before I came down here. There's 652, uh, listings, under $400,000, there's 68. So the cost of housing, that's a median number, but the average is higher. So when we think about the future residents of Littleton, the people who are going to serve us, take care of our kids, teach our kids, fight fires, keep our community safe, um, you know, we talk about firefighters and teachers, but frankly, at 150K, that, uh, that's not a lot of people. So apartments do provide a good continuum of housing, allows people to get into your community. So we've got a choice here. We can be bolder, everybody can drive in, take advantage of bolder, serve the people of bolder, and then they drive out. Everybody's worried about traffic. Guaranteed traffic will get worse if we build housing on the outskirts and everybody's driving in to go work at the hospital. Um, so, you know, this is really about housing. Are we going to provide housing for the future residents? Going back, this has been a long process. We've been in here for two years. We submitted pre-app two years and three months ago now. Um, it takes a long time to get housing approved, and that's going back to the graphs that I showed earlier, that's part of the problem. So, you know, my ask today is that you guys reinforce planning commission's decision to bring affordable housing to the constituents and future residents of Littleton. Um, we're all really fortunate. We sit here, we all probably are homeowners. I don't think we could afford the homes that we live in today if we had to buy them today. And I think that's everybody in this room, myself included. So thank you guys for your time. Thank you, council, thank you, mayor, Mayor Protam.
Any questions, council? Yeah, Councilmember Reckert and then Councilmember Grove.
So are you saying the rent for the apartments that you're proposing is going to be two grand a month?
Uh, slightly over, yeah, as an average.
So it's more than the median rent cost?
Correct, those are median, those are all classes of apartments, class C, B, and A.
Right, but you're making an argument we should be supporting affordable housing, but is the housing that you're proposing affordable?
I will say, Councilmember Reckert, that these very specifics are not part of this application or any of our criteria that we can consider.
Yep, but he brought it up.
But it's something that you may not consider during the year deliberation.
It feels.
I, I understand what it feels like, but I'm telling you what it is like.
Well then, why should we pay attention to what he had to say?
That's your choice, and I'm happy to answer that question.
It, it's fine, I'm just letting you know that we can't say.
I, it's not quasi judicial, so why can't I ask?
Because we have very specific criteria that we can only apply to this. You can ask it, but I'm just saying it's not something that you can consider when you make your.
Okay, I ask it, I won't consider. Is this, what is the price of your rent?
Yeah, so we look at this $652,000 home. It's a $3,800 a month mortgage. My rents will be well over $1,000 short of that.
All right, what is the price of your rent?
I don't know yet. It takes a long time to build these, economics change.
What is the planned price of your rent?
The planned price of the overall unit mix, studios, ones, twos, and threes, average out to about $2,300 a unit.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Grove. Okay, you can wait. Any other questions? No more, thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Do you guys have any more presentation?
No.
Great, all right. Um, we do have 12 people signed up for public comment. We do have a few people that walked in that didn't sign up, that I'm assuming are going to speak, otherwise they wouldn't be sitting here. Um, just council good moving forward. Does anyone need a break, uh, real quick before we sit through 45 minutes? Two minutes? All right, we'll be back in two minutes, yeah, we'll do it now, otherwise it'll be 45 minutes. We'll be back, recess for a few minutes. All right, we are back. We have, as this is a resolution with a public hearing. Uh, no, we have a public, uh, public comment portion now. Uh, we do have, uh, 12 people signed up. Uh, we'll go through, uh, people that signed up, and anyone that didn't sign up ahead of time can have the chance to speak as well. Uh, like before, we'll be limited to three minutes. If you have the exact same comments someone before, you can just say, "I agree," um, and we'll keep moving. So first person is Lynn Christensen.
Mayor, can I just ask a favor of the speakers to, if you live directly behind to the north of that project, would you just mention that, I think your opinion has the most value? Thanks.
I'm Lynn Christensen from District Three. As far as the decision criteria for impact mitigation, many concerns have been shared already about drainage from the residents. So I have several questions. Number one, what is the city code concerning capacity of the proposed detention pond? Number two, how is the capacity going to be calculated? Number three, will the new drainage require downstream increases to stormwater capacity? And number four, who will be maintaining the pond? Another decision criteria is compatibility of land use types and characteristics with the properties in the immediate vicinity of the subject property. So I have further questions. Number one, where are the visual renderings providing the view from the adjacent single-family homes estimated to be at least 80 feet above their properties due to the large elevation change that wasn't mentioned of the subject property? Number two, how do four and five-story apartments provide the scale and transition standards to protect the neighborhood character of the surrounding residences, which is one of the purposes outlined in the corridor mixed-use standards? And you can please, um, see my submittal in your online public comments that you should have. Thirdly, I'll address the criteria to support the comprehensive plan. With the previous approval of thousands of market-rate apartments, building even more high-density rental apartments does not comply with comp plan goal H and N1, which is to provide, as already stated, quantity and diversity of housing options that make living in Littleton attainable for a wide range of age groups and income levels. Lastly, compo- compatible land use types which do provide a. Lastly, compatible land use types which do provide appropriate scale and transition to protect the single-family residences and that also align with Littleton's core housing needs include missing-middle-for-sale home types, as well as senior living, foster family care, and nursing home developments. It will undoubtedly take many years to build missing-middle housing through the proposed rezoning of residential properties. There is a land use designation called suburban residential attached that would be far more appropriate for the subject property, and it is described in my online comments. In summary, all four decision criteria need to be met to change the land use designation, and this proposed plan does not meet all the criteria, therefore it must not be approved. A more appropriate land use designation for the property is suburban residential attached, which will meet the decision criteria for the future and provide lower-density missing-middle housing. And lastly, the best way to accumulate wealth in the future is to buy a home not to rent. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn, next up is Nancy Kern.
I will pass.
Just for the record, she checked opposed, uh, Maria?
Cristopite Bochino.
Yeah, that.
Yeah.
I'm Maria Cristopite Bochino, and I live seven hundred feet within the, uh, proposed plan, I live on Alati Circle. Um, okay, so, today I'm here to talk about traffic and some of the safety concerns I have, I know we've talked about traffic a couple of times, but, um, at the Planning Commission, I was told that the hundred and seventy units in the, uh, proposed plan would not make a blip on the traffic, which is why it was not considered, and nothing, um, alternating Broadway would be considered. But as we look at it holistically, we see that there's also three hundred and twelve units being built across the street, and now, as, uh, Mr. Sullivan said, we have five thousand units, um, or five thousand shoppers at Costco every day, so I think that we have to look just beyond these one hundred and seventy units and look at the full impact of the traffic on Broadway. The other concern I have is at that corner of Fremont and Easter, down at the bottom of the hill, three-eighty-four Fremont Avenue is being torn down to make an access path onto Fremont, that's the lot that they were talking about buying. That means more kids and more bikes, and I can tell you right now, there's a three-way stop at the bottom of that hill, so many cars go through it, they don't even slow down or pause, maybe there's a quick glance, but there's, there is dangerous situations. Additionally, as we've gotten bigger cars and more cars, you've got cars parking on both sides of the street, both down Fremont and Easter, it's almost impossible now for two cars to pass at the same time. Throw in kids, throw in bikes, throw in teenagers, I think this creates a very dangerous situation. I've, uh, at times I've been driving up Fremont Hill, right at the canal, bikers, walkers, hikers go across from one side of the canal to the other without looking for traffic. I happen to stop there, so I'll be one of the ones keeping the kids safe coming out from the access path, but I think this creates a very dangerous situation that we should look at in terms of our kids, their safety, and as, as the person who talked about right of way talked about, we need to provide greater protection for our residents. Please protect our kids, protect our residents, and do not approve this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria, next up is George Kern.
Hi, uh, George Kern, uh, seven thirty-three West Alati Circle, and, uh, we're not on Fremont North and South, but, uh, we are right close to the High Line Canal there, and go up and down it each time, so. At the, um, last Planning Commission hearing on this project, the possibility of requiring the developer to provide a turn lane off Broadway to the area was mentioned, just as the Littleton Village project across Broadway had been required to do. Planning staff responded later in the hearing that requiring that much off-site work for just one, one hundred seventy-three unit project would not be fair to the developer. Okay, fair enough, but that would mean if traffic backups become unmanageable on Broadway, the city will have to deal with and pay for a solution. So maybe some consideration should be given to what is fair for the city. And to be fair, you should recognize that the city will have to give up some things if this high-density residential zoning change is approved. Dealing with and paying for Broadway Street enhancements is not the only item. As noted by a member of the Planning Commission during the prior hearing, the city would be giving up some available office building zoning, just as an expanded Littleton Hospital might increase the need for nearby medical office space. But would it be fair to tell this property's landowner that they should ride out the current slow office space market on the hope of some increased future upswing? Maybe, maybe not, but some consideration of fairness to the city should also be considered. So why so much density? If you look at the developments going on in established areas of the metro area, it sure looks like everybody and his brother is building large, high-density, multi-story apartment buildings on infill sites. Remember the EMW Furniture Store up at, uh, North Broadway and Evans? Now a huge multi-story apartment building. The old site for Racine's Restaurant just north of Spear in South Central Denver? No more restaurant, a new, very large, multi-story apartment complex. Ball Arena, according to the Denver Post, is proposing changing a bunch of their parking areas into high-density residential, a big, multi-year project. And RTD has been mentioned as wanting to take sections of their parking lots and build apartments, as if nobody's ever going to drive in and park at an RTD site again. This has all the hallmarks of yet another Denver area boom-bust housing cycle with a strong potential for Littleton to be holding the bag on some of these high-density and quite possibly underutilized, underutilized projects. Is it fair to have Littleton roll the dice?
Thank you, George, that's your three minutes.
Uh...
Goes by fast, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does.
All right, next up, we have Brian and Karen Gray, do one of you wanna speak? You can both speak, but individually, but, uh...
Hi, I'm Brian Gray, uh, we actually own fourteen, uh, building fourteen right there in Dry Creek Circle. One thing that nobody's mentioned tonight, there's only one entrance to get in that complex and to get out, that's it. So if you're talking about putting, uh, last time I heard it was like two hundred and twenty-eight units, let's just say that's three hundred cars or two hundred cars. Adding on top of the traffic situation, which if you leave that complex anytime between four and four-thirty, it is gonna be backed up all the way from where the new restaurant is, all the way south past the shopping center. So you're gonna sit there and you're gonna wait, now you're gonna add another two hundred cars. The other thing is, nobody has contacted the business owners, or nobody's contacted us, and we're within a hundred feet. What does the business community think about this? We pay taxes as well, and nobody has talked about the effect this is gonna have on us, and, and I think that's huge, 'cause we pay quite a bit in taxes. Um, is it gonna make it active and safer? I don't know how, daily, we have people coming up off the High Line Canal, whether they're homeless, whether they're cutting through. A lot of people have been talking about the kids, where are the kids gonna play now? Are they gonna stay in that complex where there's hardly enough parking, or are they gonna come out onto our property? And I've got, I've got kids, and that sounds terrible, but I've also gotta protect my investment, our investment, so that's something to think about. Um, the affordable housing, I believe the last time we were at a meeting, they were talking about one to three bedrooms, condos or apartments, what have you. Tonight I heard tanning salons and a bar possibly going in there. It, the field is a business park, it's not a residential area. If it was a residential area, you can put another entrance somewhere, so you've got two entrances versus just one getting in. There's only one way in and one way out, and that's it. So hopefully you've heard me tonight, I appreciate it, and let's just see where we go, thanks.
Thank you, Brian. Did Karen wish to speak as well?
Good evening, council, thank you mayor for taking us separately, because I think this is a very important issue for both residents and commercial property, that has not been addressed, that this was a small community of development made for a business park, that is very tight-knit community, um, one of the developers said, "It isn't, it's empty." It is not empty, it is constantly turning, we have a cancer center, we have a dentistry in there, we are a financial planning that owns my, uh, part of the building, we have many different platforms in there for different things. Biggest concern is what my husband mentioned, one way in, one way out. Today, prime example, there was an emergency vehicle in the development, they blocked everything going in and out. If there had been an additional traffic, about a hundred and seventy units they're talking about, and let's be honest, that's two cars per unit, maybe three, depending on how many people are inside the home. Getting in and out of there would have been impossible. Currently, you sit at the traffic light at Broadway to leave the sub, the commercial park right now, takes me two traffic lights to get in, to get onto the Broadway. To get from Broadway into the business park, it takes me three traffic lights, and this is at ten AM in the morning, and I am sitting in the turning lane, and I'm coming back behind other cars that no longer is the yellow lines that you're supposed to cross. Is it a concern? It's a great concern, and I had hoped to see more of our business partner here, but they're very frustrated. Let me share why they're frustrated, we weren't told, nothing was shared with us. If you look at the developer's maps, everything is positioned from our courtyard up. Fire departments have been in there, they have to do three-point turns and go into our neighbor's park, they're parking to get in there, they have to use another businesses to make the turn. We are concerned about the storm drainage going through, we've had issues, sewer issues, that's gonna be the city, that's gonna be something that they're gonna have to take care of as well, that's additional expenses to you. I really highly would recommend you to say no, this is not something residential, this is not beneficial for either us as a business or our residents behind us. Thank you, and I really hope you do take this in consideration, considering you don't have the full picture.
Thank you, Karen, next up we have Joy Archbold.
I will not speak, and I am very opposed.
Okay, marked as opposed on this, uh, next up Craig Arcand.
Craig Arcand, I represent the north neighborhood, approximately forty-five neighbors. Um, I'm here today to talk about this development going in our backyard, you know, we're all for development, everybody in the neighborhood is, we understand that this is a medical office park, but I wanna make sure that the team has the information in front of them, and there should be this original document from nineteen eighty-something that tells you what the forefathers wanted to propose for that area, we seem to skip over that quite a bit, but in this, we talk about some pretty major changes, so we talk about compatibility, you know, building heights were limited to twenty-five feet, we're now going over sixty-five feet to ridge line, that doesn't include grade, so we could be seventy, eighty feet. So if you take this room, say this is twenty feet, multiply it by three, or if you go from the distance from this side of the room to that side of the room, multiply it by two, that's how tall that building's gonna be in our backyard, so you're, you're eliminating any views from the mountains, and you're eliminating, you know, the skyline really, and then the, the casting of shadows and what have you is a prime concern. You know, a hundred and sixty-five parking spots, there's gonna be traffic. Uh, twenty-twenty-seven report on the original building council had, um, it, at twenty-twenty-seven, it's all F, and their, their statement was, "Well, it's failing anyways, so it's another a hundred and seventy units." Uh, I think we need to really look at our development plan here as a broad picture, looking at this big picture, you know, the, the development team had an opportunity, and they, and they chose to put this into your court to let you guys decide on this today, and I think there needs to be a big discussion on how this comes to, comes to fruition. Now, the, the neighbor that sold the house, one of the reasons was is, yeah, we need access to the, the trail, but it's also for sewer and water, that's gonna tie into an existing main line that was put in how many years ago, and was it engineered and designed for a hundred and seventy units, which, let's just say, call that, uh, three hundred and some toilets, five hundred, six hundred sinks, how many showers, two, two showers? I mean, you, you can kinda get the gist of the use that's gonna go into an existing sewer line that wasn't there at one point. Um, you know, these units are gonna be about twenty-three, twenty-four hundred, that's still a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, so is that what a fire, fireman makes? You know, is that an apprentice electrician making eighteen bucks an hour? No, you're gonna, you're gonna be pretty well off in a, in a really, you know, stellar profession to, to afford this type of housing, so, so that's good, um, you know, I'm just here to, just to plead to say, hey, let's take a look at the original plan, it should be in your documents, and hopefully you guys got all the comments that, that we've made, 'cause the Planning Commission did not, and so, I'm just here to say, please, consider not passing this today.
Thank you, Craig. Next up is Stephen Finlayson.
Thank you for hearing me, got one question, how many of you been to the site to see what, where the impact's gonna be? Okay, thank you, appreciate that. So, I live at four-sixty-four West Easter, so I'm in the morning shadow of these upcoming buildings, and the traffic just happened tonight, there was an auto pedestrian accident at Fremont and Broadway, not sure what the outcome was, but this is a continuing issue with the traffic we currently have, we have increased traffic coming across from Littleton, or Littleton Village that goes down Fremont. The intersection at Fremont and Easter, we've counted over two hundred an hour going through that multiple times during the day, plus it's a school zone, we have the high school traffic going through there multiple times per day, there's traffic backed up halfway down Fremont. Now we're taking out a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar house at the, next to the bridge in order to allow more foot traffic and bicycle traffic going to the High Line Canal, which has no safety features at all, the bridge is too narrow, the sidewalks don't allow people to walk side by side across it, it's putting, adding safety issues for children, school kids, and anybody just walking or riding a bicycle in the High Line Canal. And we're just waiting for somebody to end up dying again on the Littleton streets because of additional traffic. Drainage, as was mentioned earlier, um, he was talking about the sewer, I'm talking about the storm drains here, the storm drains right now, there's nonexistent at Fremont and Easter. The water runs down the street, hits the curbs, goes over the curbs into my yard, and any additional water is going to go into my windows. Right now, the whole, and then they're gonna tap into the storm sewers from the retention ponds, which none of that water currently comes to Fremont at all, so that's totally all new, and it's six acres, so we're calculating, oh, three-inch rain would be one and a half, um, acre-feet of water in addition to what we currently have going down through there. I gave you all a packet, so, to explain a lot of stuff that I'm missing on the, um, conversation here, but I really think we need to defer the com, or the vote on... But I really think we need to defer the vote on this until you actually fully grasp all the impact from the traffic, the sewer, the shadowing. Because they, they're going to lose all the sunlight in the morning, the privacy in their backyards. Snow not melting, they won't be able to grow their gardens and stuff like they do now because of additional shadowing from the buildings at different times of day. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Stephen. Next up is Kurt Keely.
Kurt Keely, 486 West Fremont Drive. Lee Gulch in my backyard, and my front yard across the circle is access to the Highline Canal. I am just shy of four decades in beautiful Littleton. And I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and you councilpeople, for your commitment to do the heavy lifting. You got a tough job. Thank you. My point is about the process of transparency and public comments. Decision makers need the best information based on the most current conditions to make good decisions. November 11th, the planning commission did not have that. People here have received from the city barrister and the highest official in the town in writing, information about that. But remember, on November 11th, game day for us, the planning commission did not have a number of citizen comments. My faith in the obfuscated process is diminishing. But again, Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for your input.
Thank you, Mr. Keely. Next up is Tanner Fennello.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the time tonight. My name's Tanner Fennello. I'm hired representative of the subject property owner, the Del Ponte family. I was hired as a commercial broker to market their property in 2019. Interesting part about my marketing process is that we started before the InVision process, and I also marketed it after the InVision process was passed in 2021. When we began marketing the property, we marketed it as it was with the PUD. We found interested parties. Those interested parties came to staff, talked to then-staff members, and were encouraged not to submit their plans. They said simply, we're going to have a citywide rezoning. We encourage you to wait until after that process is done to utilize the underlying zoning that will be put in there, which is CM. Once that was completed in 2021, my team used the CM allowed-use table to target and specifically reach out to allowed uses. I'm not a spring chicken. I, I like to go path of least resistance. You find the allowed uses and you go market towards them. In those, in that process, I can tell you from, in the process before InVision and the process after, there's one similarity. There was no office, which includes medical or clinic interest. And that means from me pitching it to someone, and someone saying, I'm interested, or from somebody looking at marketing or solicitation that we've sent out and contacting us. We did send out flyers to all of the property owners in the nearby area. So they knew what we were doing, what we were selling, and they had their opportunity to buy that. The one thing that I will say that, we had a lot of interest from multifamily and similar density projects. So I mean, you know, it was either multifamily or senior development, et cetera. The interesting part about this whole submarket is that everybody has said, well, why isn't there going to be an office building there? The building directly to the south, 26 West Dry Creek, is an AD1, approximately 1,000 square foot building. 41,000 square feet are available. That's nearly half of the rentable square foot. I verified this with the listing broker. I said, is that really true and accurate? And he said, yes, it is. He said, you know, why is this coming up? He said, are you thinking about putting more office in the submarket? And I said, well, you know, we have this land, there's more supply. So I took it upon myself to survey more property owners, more brokers, and look at 800,000 square feet of office in this submarket. Approximately 70% of the submarket's leased. That leaves a 30% vacancy, all-time high vacancy levels after COVID. There's no cure in sight for what's happening to office. This does answer something that is really important in Littleton, and that's an urgent housing matter. And I, on behalf of the family, I urge you to pass this, especially since it's a commercial infill that's been vacant, and we have a good use for it today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fennello. Next up is Pam Chadbourne.
I'm still Pam Chadbourne, a little block and a half from here. So first off, I'm just going to say, the current market is not what you need to consider. You need to consider eight decades of use here. Changing the use now will affect the next eight decades. And I think that's what I don't think was considered during this process up to now. So I sympathize with the family, but I'm sure that in, at some point, the office use will be there, especially if council affirms that use tonight. I agree with everybody else who spoke, though, and all of those points were good. Lynn gave you all the legal stuff, and I like your comments as well. I think it's, if I were on staff, I would look at the code, and then I'd look at the flu. And I'd say, well, look, the flu, as I think one of you pointed out, giving, pointing but not naming names, that if the flu is more restrictive, then I as staff would apply both. You apply both, that has to meet both. And then you would say, oh, I'm sorry, I really need to encourage you out of these 12. I want to encourage you toward the suburban, commercial use. Not, not a urban, dense kind of residential, which is a huge change from the existing use. So I, I should talk about the four requirements. Compatibility, it's not compatible. People have already talked about the impact of traffic, safety. Other businesses on Dry Creek Circle, if you've ever been there, you know it fits well now. And the infrastructure is made for that as well, and the drainage and all of those things. I don't think this functions well if this changes much less other sites there, which seem, our staff seems to think is allowed. I don't think it is. I think the developer tried with this, but unfortunately, their plan is simply unmitigatable. It is too aggressive, too large to be mitigated. And clearly, the solar easements and the shade are not mitigated. At the planning commission, somebody did present the shadow analysis on the public side. And this changes ice and snow on the houses. It changes solar access or easements. They can't have solar panels. They're established 40, 50 years. It's wrong to change this on them. And it, it, the impacts are not mitigated. Comp plan, let me just say, when the comp plan was passed, the attorney advised us to pass something that said, you all didn't have to notify everybody within the city. You should have notified everybody.
Next up is Bob Schwinn, and that's the last person to have signed up. And then we'll give options for other people. Bob Schwinn left? Bob Schwinn? No Bob Schwinn? All right. Anybody else in the audience that is here that didn't sign up? Keely, like to speak?
Hi there. My name's Keely Quinn. I live in District 2. And I'm not trying to take up a ton of time tonight, but I do want to voice my support for the amendment to the FLUC for 16 West Dry Creek. I appreciate the steps the developer has taken to keep the buildings further away from the neighbors than they need to be, and going above and beyond to provide access for the Highline and paths to school for kids. I also think it's important that we let our city grow. In earlier discussions tonight, we have, we discussed that we have an aging city that will need infrastructure maintenance. And if we continue to keep new neighbors out, we'll continue to struggle to pay for our maintenance. This property is currently zoned commercial-mixed, meaning it would have been short-sighted for neighbors or anyone else to believe housing construction was outside of the realm of possibility. We all know that our city needs more housing. We all know that our country needs more housing. And as somebody whose friends and myself can struggle to afford housing, I urge you to please allow this. I look forward to the missing middle housing upgrades through the ULCA that you'll be voting on in January. But unfortunately, that's not our conversation tonight. And it's important to move forward with providing housing now. Housing prices will never stop skyrocketing if we don't start building houses. I'm looking forward to seeing our city grow and welcoming new neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you may come up now.
Good evening. My name's Dana Stright, and I live at 282 West Fremont. So I back up to the subject property. So thank you to council members and to Mayor Pro Tem this evening. So most of the folks have already addressed some of the comments that we've made. I wanted to make sure that you received the packets of comments because, as previously mentioned, the planning commission stated in the hearing that they did not receive our comments. And so we felt that maybe their decision was not fully informed by the neighborhood. There, there are many neighbors that we've talked to. We've held neighborhood meetings, and we've gone door-to-door and talked to all of the neighbors surrounding the property. And part of the reason that they're more represented here tonight is because they felt like they had already lost after the planning commission meeting. We kind of felt like this was backwards, like we were hoping that we would have had an opportunity to come to you first. Till, you know, there was some confusion about whether it was a rezoning or a re-characterization. So now I'm glad we've addressed that, and I hope that the city council and the staff will address that moving forward. One of the things that wasn't mentioned was the original plan development. I would just ask that you consider that that was in place or is in place. You know, the heights have changed from 25 feet to 65. That's a 260% increase. One of the things that hasn't been mentioned is that the buffer used to be 100 feet, and it's now 15. So if you can imagine, having cars 15 feet from our property line. So that's something that we're very concerned about. I would also ask a question about the height of the retaining wall that might be at the property line. I don't think that's been addressed. So thank you very much for your attention tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would wish to public comment? We'll go, go ahead. I saw you first, and then...
Hello, my name is Matt Duff. I live on the, in all the maps, I'm on the east or the west side of the map, on the other side of the Highline Canal. Tonight's meeting is about, you know, this becoming multi-use residential, and I support that. You know, I'm an adjacent property to this, and I think, you know, there's residential all around this. And I think that it fits in well with Cross Broadway, you know, to the north of it beside it. And I think residential and multifamily is a very similar use out of the gate, you know? And so I support this. I did want to chat, too, about, you know, I think, I think we've built a lot of fragile cities in the United States. You know, where we have, like, you can have this use over here, you can have this use over here. And then when preferences change, we have a really hard time adjusting to that. You know, if we, if we go too far on one side. You know, if someone's having a portfolio that they're investing, they want that to be diversified. And I think that the more Littleton as a city is diversified, I think that actually makes us a less fragile city. It makes us much more resilient moving forward into the future. And I think that there's a really big opportunity on, like, Littleton Boulevard, Broadway, Mineral to double down on having this mixed-use corridors that permit the other areas to stay single-family. You know, single-family homes are some of the most expensive types of developments that a city can have on its books to support through services, because they're just very non-dense. And so this enables us to have that ability. And then I wanted to speak quickly about affordability. So I think people, whenever development comes up, and people come up here to this lecture, and they expect that, like, if we build this development, houses will go from 700,000 to 300,000. And that's like their expectation. And if it only goes from the average house costs 3,000 to 2,300, then that's a failure. And I don't understand that mentality. You know, I don't understand how we want to see, like, prices have in order for it to be classified as affordable. I remember in Econ 101 in college, there's the supply curve and the demand curve. And you increase, you know, if there's more demand, you have to increase supply. And this does that. It does not solve it, but it is moving towards that end. And then I rode my bike here through the intersection, you know, that people have been chatting about. And my kids have a dentist appointment tomorrow. They're going to try to go over to the dentist in that seven-story building in which we love. My son has a friend over on the other side of Broadway. And tonight, I believe, someone, a pedestrian, was hit at that intersection at Broadway and Fremont. I think this increases the safety of my four children that live right adjacent to this property. It'll give us the opportunity, there's a hill cresting, you know, Fremont right there, and it's pretty much blind. You know, depending on if you're going north and trying to turn and left. It's a very dangerous intersection, and this will take some of the pressure off.
Thank you, Mr. Duff. That's your three minutes?
That went so fast.
I know. Time flies when you're having fun.
Howdy. My name is Billy Gooch. I live in Stephen Barr's District 3. You know, Littleton's a great place to live. I enjoy living here. We've been here for 10 years now. Lots of other people want to live here. But Littleton's becoming unaffordable and not a table for a lot of folks. So, you know, you want to stay in your community, you want to stay close to your family, you want to stay close to your friends, you want to live close to where you work. You know, if we don't build more housing for folks, they don't disappear. They don't, you know, move to Wyoming instead, they just move farther away. We still have the traffic as they need to commute through Littleton. It's just that now they're so far away, now they're gumming up 470 and Santa Fe and I-25 and whatever else in addition to that. So some stats I was looking up. Realtor.com says the median home price in Littleton, $650,000. So you need to put $130,000 down for your 20%. Freddie Mac says interest rates are 6.81%. So when you take out that $520,000 mortgage on the median house in Littleton, you're paying $3,400 a month. That's just your principal and interest. No escrow, no property taxes, no homeowner's insurance, no mortgage insurance. You know, if you follow the 2.5 annual income rule, you would need to make $260,000 a year to afford the median house in Littleton. So half of them are more expensive than that. So, you know, we need to make room for folks. One of the concerns is traffic. You know, that's why I'm glad this development would be right next to the Highline Canal, where folks could maybe commute by bicycle, as I did when I worked in Centennial at Colorado and Dry Creek. I live just down the Highline Canal, as I said. You know, it's interesting that some people were outing their, I guess, neighbors as very dangerous drivers, that the Highline Canal crossings are very fraught. I mean, maybe we need to improve that, too. Maybe we can put in a Hawk Light, maybe we need speed bumps or a stop sign. I don't know. It sounds like somebody was injured just tonight, so. But these are all room for improvement. These are all solvable problems. You know, people want to live in Littleton, and I want people to be here, too. We need more families, we need more neighbors, we need more workers, we need, you know, kids in our school system. Douglas County's having meetings right now to talk about all the schools that they're closing because families can't afford to move there and raise their children, raise their families there. And I don't want to see that happen to Littleton. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Billy. Is there anybody else in the audience that would wish to speak on this item tonight? I don't see any hands going up, so I'm going to close the public comment portion.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution 115.
No, 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 not yet.
Mayor, I move to extend the meeting and date, or and time, sorry, to 10:30.
Do we want to be time-specific?
Nope. Someone should, else should do that.
Just withdraw.
I withdraw the statement and move to extend the meeting beyond 10:00 PM.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to extend the meeting beyond 10:00 PM, per our protocols. We have to do that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, voting's open. Councilmember record.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously. The motion carries unanimously.
Happy birthday, City Attorney. That's from the council. All right, council, does anyone have any additional questions before? Okay, Councilmember Reardon, questions for staff or for the applicant?
Yes, for staff. Can you speak to some of the comments we heard tonight, was that the business owners were not contacted? Can you speak to that a little bit, Terry?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we follow the standard protocol of required in the code, that all residents and property owners be notified via postcard within 700 feet of the property. So, it would probably not encompass all of the commercial area, but quite a bit of it.
So, postcards were mailed to all the business properties within that area?
Within the 700-foot buffer, yes.
And I would add that that same list was used for... With modifications, because it's updated for each time we send out a public notice for all three neighborhood meetings that were conducted for Planning Commission, and then also it was done for the City Council, and also two site signs were also put on per the code requirement on the site for anybody who were to drive by or take a look at the site.
Any other questions, Councilmember Reardon?
I have two process questions and one question for the developer. So, several... There was a lot of conversation around, early in the comments, around the size and dimensions of the retention pond. Is that something that's been determined now, or is that something that's going to be determined? Where are we on that process?
Yeah, absolutely. So, what has been proposed and what the Planning Commission reviewed was a conceptual MDP. So, that does not have all of the engineering documents required for a full site plan. That's step two, is the site plan approval. That being said, anything that does come before staff for review will have to meet our stormwater requirements and provisions, and that would be to maintain stormwater on-site and then allow for us discharge at an appropriate rate, as to not create challenges.
So, I guess the stormwater require... What I'm interpreting it as is the stormwater requirements have not fully been executed because of where we are at the process.
Correct.
Okay. And then the other...
Real quick, I was going to say, there was some preliminary stormwater information submitted to the city that our engineering staff has already started to take a look at.
Okay. And then, same question for where are we in the process for trying to understand the impact on sewage? And is that... Have we gotten to that part of the process? Have we passed that part of the process? Where does that occur?
It'd be a similar scenario, where the concept has been outlined. However, the finer details will be submitted with the civil CD drawings at time of site plan, which is the next step.
So, does that mean that... Has there been a kind of an initial, that probably will work kind of evaluation, or is there... I mean, do you know what I'm saying? Can my...
There is preliminary information that has been submitted, and one of the solutions that the development team has brought forward was to provide that additional lot that does allow for some of that flow to then... And utility access through that lot. And I don't want to get too far in, because I'm not an engineer, but that lot was part of the solution, and, you know, I do know that we have the development team here as well, that can probably speak to a bit of that as well.
And I will get to it in a little bit, but the questions you're asking are more for the decision criteria for an MDP, which is not what we're doing, that I'll get to the criteria for a future lenient map, so it's kind of... Those are not actually applicable to our decision site.
I understand that, but I feel like it would be completely disrespectful to the public if we don't address questions they brought forward, even if, you know, even if we can't use them. Because I mean, I feel we would make it... Just... I just feel it would be disrespectful to not address that. And I only have one more question.
Go ahead.
And that's for the developer around this issue of a retaining wall facing Fremont Street. Is that something that's in the plans, or just what is the status of the retaining wall?
The site falls from east to west, so there will be zero retaining wall. I can't comment on heights, it's going to get larger and larger as it descends towards the detention pond. The retaining walls... One thing it will help with is the headlights, we're building a fence, or shrubbery, or whatever the neighbors feel is appropriate for that treatment of that area.
So, I'm just... I'm... Are you... So, you're talking about a retaining wall on the western side of the...
North side of the property.
The north side of the property.
Correct.
And... Okay. And do you have a planned height for that?
It varies based on the grade.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
And going back to your last two comments, we've had four rounds of view with engineering staff on sanitary sewer and all the impacts of that, so that has been well-reviewed by the city staff in Littleton.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
The question, Councilmember Reardon, I actually have one. Can I just jump in front of you, since you've already asked a question? I had the same question, though. One of the comments that was brought up was taking a look at eight decades of use on that site. What is the current structure's use on that site right now?
The current use proposed... Or, the current land use on the future land...
Not the current land use map. What is the current structure?
The current structure is a single-family residential home.
So, the current land use is residential, correct?
The current use, correct.
Current, okay. Thank you. Councilmember Reardon?
That house would have predated the...
I know, but that's just showing that the future land use map does not meet the current zoning of the land use of residential, so... Councilmember Reardon?
One of the additional concerns we heard tonight was the one-way-in, one-way-out challenge. Can you talk about what's... Where the mitigation is for that? Because that does make some sense to me around some safety issues.
Right. That was something that was taken a look at very closely through all the multiple rounds. We went, in fact, over three rounds of reviews. Our coordination with outside entities, the primary entity that really needs to make certain that that one access point is going to work is South Metro Fire. And the developers, when they went over their presentation, showed how they modified their site to ensure that you can get the turn radiuses required from a large fire truck, because that was one of the requirements South Metro Fire had. And so, all of the dimensions, the turn radiuses, and information that's been provided on the design at this conceptual stage meets what is needed for having only one access point, and a second access point wasn't required for the development as it's proposed currently.
Could it be, as the site further develops? Does that ever make sense?
They still have to go through the whole site plan process.
I know, but is that a possibility, that that would be determined?
With the current design, only one access point is needed.
Okay.
Any other questions, council? We can definitely have comments after the motion is made.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Now, I'm going to make a...
Mayor, I'm sorry.
See you, manager.
Prior to council's consideration, I would like to clarify if I may, staff's understanding of the issue raised by a speaker about the Planning Commission information available, I just want, for the council and for the public, we're... We are aware that one comment was not provided in a timely manner to the Planning Commission, just based on when that comment was received. But it's really important that council know that the Planning Commission had full staff report and all other comments from residents for that meeting, and for their decisions that have kind of brought this to you tonight. Thanks.
Mayor Protem?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 115-2024, approving an amendment to the future land use and character map for 16 West Dry Creek Circle.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 115. Council, I'm going to change things up a little bit here and just... And go first, because this is a very complicated, unique case here with it not being quasi-judicial, but having very specific criteria that we have to make our decision on, based on the Unified Land Use Code. We heard a lot of things tonight, and actually, a lot of things were speaking to a lot of the master development plan criteria, a lot of the specifics. We are not... We are not... Our purpose tonight is to not figure out the specifics of, you know, retaining walls or ingress egress, or height, or shadows, or things like that. We're just basically trying to say, does multifamily residential make sense there? Is it work? Does it fit? Is it meet the criteria? And the criteria we have are compatibility. The land use types are... Characteristics of the proposed land use category will be compatible with properties in the immediate vicinity of the property. Impact mitigation, the amendment may serve to mitigate adverse impacts of the use and development on land on the natural, built environments, including limited mobility, air quality, water quality, noise level, stormwater management, vegetation, or will be neutral. Three, comprehensive plan, the proposed amendment supports the goals of the comprehensive plan. And four, changing conditions, the amendment may serve to address changing condition that was not anticipated by the comprehensive plan. And so, as we go through this, big picture, changing from suburban commercial to suburban residential multifamily, just generically, because there's nothing to say that when they do their site plan, they might have to have to ingress egress, they might have to change the buildings, they might have to change the detention ponds. We are not taking a look at those very specifics. And so, when you look at compatibility, I think having multifamily, border, single-family residential is compatible. I don't see incompatibility there. Impact mitigation, I think... I don't necessarily see a negative impact. It's neutral with respect to these issues. I don't see a whole much degradation of our natural environment. Comprehensive plan, yes, this supports the comprehensive plan goals, because we've talked about having needed more housing. And the fact that the result of our comprehensive plan was the Unified Land Use Code, which the zoning that it currently exists is, allows residential. And then finally, changing conditions, I think this talks about the changing conditions. We've had a single-family residential home on this property for how long? It was in, what, '88? Did you say '88, '89? That it was the planned development overlay, it was for office space. That hasn't happened. There's been a changing conditions. That use is not necessarily compatible with the site, otherwise, it would have been developed that way. And so, I think it's difficult to have this conceptual thought with this, and I think we need to, as I said before, clean that process up in the future, but when it's specific to this, we're just looking at the land use map, not anything with any criteria that Planning Commission considered when they did the MDP, which was layout, quality, natural resources, additional criteria. We don't have the ability to consider any of that, so I just want council to know that. And as you go through, please refer to the four decision criteria, so... And with that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Driscoll.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I know the site real well. I've been going to this site for probably close to three years, I think is when my doctor moved over there. I'll be there on Thursday. I'm doing fine. Anyways, I... Everything you just said, Mayor, is spot-on. Again, I think it's important to... For the residents to know of what we're doing. This reminds me of other decisions we had to make regarding certain projects around town, not, you know, people thought we were approving high-rises, and we're not doing that. We're approving... We're asking to approve, you know, future land use, and so, what you had just said was spot-on, so I... I'm going to go ahead and approve this.
Councilmember Reardon?
I also agree with the mayor's assessment of how this design criteria meets what we've heard tonight. I want to also add around the comprehensive plan, you know, one of our goals is housing, and moving this site from the single-family home that it is right now, or into redevelopment and commercial space, does not help us with affordable housing piece. Now, that is subjective, right? We've talked about affordable. What does that mean? And a $2,000 apartment, certainly, wouldn't it be affordable to me as a social worker? But we didn't talk very briefly, it was mentioned, the inclusive housing ordinance. What that mandates is 5% of any new development, and it could be more, speaking to you, developers, but at least 5% of those have to be affordable, and that is... We have a definition of that, which means, yes, correct, that is about eight with what the current plan is, but the potential for that on this plot, I think, is worth the discussion, because that's 60% of the area immediate income, which means it would be affordable to a social worker, or it would be affordable, that's somebody making less than $45,000 a year for a family of one, or a family of four making less than $80,000 a year. So, that is something to consider, and I've been very vocal that it's important that we have those kind of options to our community, and I want to support that, even if it's eight, or 10, or whatever that might be. Those are homes for people that wouldn't otherwise be able to make in our community, so I will support this amendment.
Any other council member?
Yeah.
Councilmember Peters?
I had written a few other comments, but I will be as brief as possible. I just wanted to say thanks to everyone for coming down to speak and for being involved in what's happening in Littleton. I want to assure the public that all of us, in some regard, have been involved in this conversation. We saw comments before, we've been to the site, we've talked to them about process, like, it isn't just the last hour that we've started thinking about this. So, I realize it seems maybe like this one hour is going to decide our property values, and I hope you know that it's been much more than that, and we take it very seriously. As I mentioned, I was at a citizen meeting with actually owners from the businesses there, and they asked traffic questions, which I referred to, but we're otherwise okay with this project moving forward. So, I would keep in mind that people are here, who aren't here are in favor of it as well. These are not all the voices that contribute to this. Also, I really wanted to thank you guys for the creative solution of purchasing that single-family home. I think that's above and beyond. I think that really speaks to our goals as a city of wanting to promote biking and walking. The fact that cars can't drive through there, just, as was mentioned, that promotes so many people walking, not getting in their car, putting their feet on the ground and slowing down, so I think that's a great solution. I would also like to acknowledge that it seems really clear to me that the city has a lot of criteria, a lot of steps, to assume that we are moving forward with not thinking about sewer or stormwater. I mean, they've been at this for two years, so I hope that it's... I think it's clear that the longer we take on a process like this, the cost goes up in the end to the consumer for each unit, so I would not be in favor of slowing this down to learn more about more details. I mean, at some point, we have to step back and say, this actually is good for the future of our city. So, yeah, it's clear to me that it does meet all four of those criteria, that you've gone above and beyond to engage with citizens and adjust things, distances, heights, positioning of buildings, all of those things I really appreciate, and I also am in favor of it.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah. Just a couple of quick comments, again, thanking the public and the developer and property owners for coming out this evening, and for staff for preparing this presentation. Yes, we have... I think we, as a team together, have a ways to go in terms of clarifying process and making it both easier for our developers, more understandable for the public, more, you know, we can do more, and... But that's okay, that's not what we're here for tonight. We're here for four criteria, as the mayor laid out. And I also want to point out as well that our... The comparison we are making here tonight about these four criteria is not between an undeveloped site and what the developer is proposing, and I was not trying to be flip when I said I ignored your presentation, but quite frankly, most of the factors included in here have nothing to do with the actual sticks that are being put up. So, you know, my... We are comparing a suburban commercial with suburban multifamily residential, and we are looking for the impacts between changing from one to the other, as if a suburban commercial site were actually maximally built out on this site already. So, with that being said, I'm just going to walk through my criteria and how I scored just for the record. Compatibility between a commercial and a residential project, we already have commercial and residential projects up against one another. This is just slightly more dense residential projects against commercial projects. There is not a compatibility interference, as in, this new land use change is not prohibiting land use or actions being taken in either of the adjacent land use designations in the parcels surrounding. Compatibility, you know, in our definition, we use compatibility to define compatibility. For me, it's, is one prohibiting the use of another, and that is not the case, so I feel that they are compatible. The next being impact mitigation. Again, the difference between water usage, stormwater mitigation, traffic management, are all, again, I think to use a council member's previous comments, a budget dust in terms of the amount of impact differential between a commercial and residential property of this particular size. If we're 100 times this size, that impact might be not so insignificant, but in my estimation... estimations, the change in use designation between the two, it is a minimal impact in terms of like the ultimate down streams, environmental, traffic, things of that nature. Comprehensive plan, I'm not going to read the comprehensive plan in its entirety here, but I think other council members have spoken to that while maybe there are aspects that folks care about with regards to character, there are other aspects in that comprehensive plan, especially with regards to housing and livability, that this is, that this is promoting, and I do think it's not a negative impact, but a positive one. And changing conditions, I think we heard from public comment, as well as folks presenting here tonight, that the current designation as a commercial space is not necessarily suited for the market. And, you know, it, again, we could, in theory, not approve this in hopes that the changing conditions criteria not be met, because we may see the market differently, but currently, I think, I mean, I live in a commercial neighborhood in a residential development, and there is a lot of commercial vacancy out there, and this is, quite frankly, this is unfair to any property owner, that we restrict their ability to do something that is compatible, that is low-impact, and that follows our comprehensive plan, and that we not change the conditions around it to allow them to actually utilize their site to its maximum full potential. So, I think this meets all four criteria, and thanks for everyone's time for coming out tonight.
Continue down the road. Councilmember Grove?
I will not be supporting this. I'm going to be the minority voice here and listen to the majority of the people that came in here that said that this was not a good change to the land use code. Before I get to the criteria, I think traffic is real. I live south of this area. I have trouble getting to the city center during rush hour, and I think to say that putting in 170 units is not going to impact traffic, is not going to impact our quality life, is being extremely naive. And I can listen to studies left and right, and it's just going to be more traffic, and it's going to take longer. It is what it is. But to say it's neg, it's, there's no impact is, I, I just can't believe it. We have 332 new units coming on in the pipeline. To say that we are not worried about housing, that we have not had more development in our community, is naive to think that we need more and more and more and more. I know we have a housing shortage. I know the population is growing, but this is not part of our affordable housing at $2,000 a pop. Granted, we get the 5%, and so, there'll be a small minority of people that maybe will be able to live there on a lower, at a lower cost of living, but I don't think this meets the criteria of our comprehensive plan. So, let me go through the criteria. Compatibility with a single-family neighborhood, the buffers aren't there, there is impact on that community, they didn't want to live next to a tall multifamily high-rise, granted, there could be a high, commercial high-rise, but that is not what they signed up for, and that's not the character of the community that they want. In terms of mitigation, how do we know what's going to be mitigated? The impact on all these factors that were mentioned tonight. The comprehensive plan, there's diversity, but it's not meeting the missing middle. It's not condominiums or something that's lower density that might fit in well in an adjacent neighborhood. Changing conditions, yes. Our charge is to say that it matches all four criteria, and in my opinion, it does not, so I will vote no.
Thank you. Councilmember Reardon?
So, I, I think I've expressed my frustration with the process, and, but I don't think that really matters today, because that's, the question before us is the question before us, and the question is whether this change of our future land use map meets, meets the four criteria. And, you know, I think it, it does meet the four criteria, and, and I feel like my, my, my hands are tied. I have a lot of concerns about, and I've voiced these concerns before, around our ability to buffer larger developments with the, uh, single-family houses, and I think we've, I've seen that challenge with the compatibility on the commercial corridor around Littleton Boulevard, and I see the same kind of challenge here with this going from single-family houses to 60, 60-foot permitted uses. But I can't take into account my, my concerns about that in the decision, and I think that 60-foot building is, the challenge of that is compounded by the fact that it's 60-foot on a hill above the houses. And so, I feel like we need to, as a city, continue to think about how we mitigate these different kind of land uses that abut each other, particularly when differently, different land uses abut single-family houses. And so, I think, but I feel like my hands are tied. I don't feel, while I understand my colleague doesn't feel like it meets the criteria, I do feel like it meets the criteria in front of us, and so, because of that, I will be voting for it.
Thank you, and I just, one more thing. I just want to thank all the members of the public for coming in here and sharing your thoughts and concerns, and also kind of apologize too with this whole process. I think it was very confusing and complicated. I know many of you thought that it was a rezoning, council was coming in, had final decision, and we could kill it. I, I still think that the connection of the future land use map and an MDP aren't actually there. However, the condition on planning commission's vote probably puts a wrinkle on that, but I think, yeah, it, they could have done a better job of making clear what was actually being done by council tonight, so. With that, we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, council? Seeing none, the voting is open.
The vote is six in favor, with councilmember Grove voting no, the motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Next item is adjournment. We are adjourned at 10:23 with no further business.